We're live.
Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the North Hampton School Committee, Tuesday, September 15th, 2020. I'm Mayor David Narkowitz, the Chair of the School Committee. This meeting is being held in as an online Zoom meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order modifying the state's open meeting law. And for those of you who are tuning in by Zoom, the meeting is being audio and video recorded. It's also being broadcast by North Hampton Open Media as well. We'll begin by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee, please.
Member Kaufman?
Here.
Member Goldman?
Yeah.
Member Voss? I saw you before, but I can't hear you right now.
She's on.
Sorry, here. My speech bar didn't work.
Member Gold?
Here.
Mayor Narkowitz?
Yes, present.
Member Busansky?
Present.
Member Fallon?
Present.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Present.
Member Condon?
Present.
And member Levy?
Present.
All present.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is a time that we reserve for members of the public to be able to offer comments on any topic to the school committee. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I'll be running a timer and asking you to wrap up when you get to three. And we also ask if you'll just state your name and where you live for the record. And in this virtual meeting environment, we ask people to raise their hands who wish to be recognized in the public comment. So for those that are attending on computer, that's as easy as, you know, from your participant menu, just clicking on the little raise hand icon. If you're calling in via telephone to the meeting, you need to use the star functions to do that. And I believe that's star six to raise your hand. So so I'll ask folks who want to raise their hand. I also just want to ask everyone if you're to mute themselves during the meeting. And and obviously, respect the time so that everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. So the first person that I see with their hand raised is Deborah Keisch, and I'll ask Deborah to unmute herself and three minutes to speak.
Thank you. I'm reading tonight, not my own comments, but I'm reading on behalf of Cara McLaughlin, who couldn't make tonight's meeting. So here is the statement that Cara prepared. Hello, my name is Cara McLaughlin. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the parent of a first grader at Leeds Elementary, am on the Leeds School Council and Chair of its Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee. I am also Board Chair of a local volunteer organization, Restorative Justice of Western Mass for Youth and Community. For the last 15-plus years, I have been studying and practicing restorative practices, as well have trained numerous educators through Western Mass in restorative practices. Yet I've learned of to adopt restorative justice policies, thinking they will be some new tools for their discipline to block. Many of them wind up abandoning restorative justice because restorative justice or restorative practices is not only a tool, but a different way of being. It's not about controlling behavior in better grades. It's about being human. Sorry. It's about being human and being human together, which education has often tested out of our classrooms and relationships. Restorative practices is about spending time to know one another, intentionally building deep relationships, and creating spaces where people who have experienced harm can be held, so they all can be understood and harm can be repaired. White supremacist policy has and does focus on trying to control and change unwanted behaviors when all students leave their trauma at the door, now virtual door. When we adopt a restorative philosophy, we understand that relationship and community building will do more to positively change a student's behavior than a suspension ever could. If we are to be restorative, we must prioritize relationship building. I understand this year's professional development is focused on becoming trauma-informed, and the school committee has stated your commitment to anti-racism. If MPS does restorative practices well, it will be an anti-racist policy and initiative, as well as being trauma-sensitive. Thank you for this opportunity and your attention.
Thank you very much for sharing those comments with us tonight. The next person that has their hand up is Noel Rayly. Noel, I'll ask you to unmute, and you have three minutes. State your name and where you live.
Thank you. I'm Noel Rayly. I live in Florence and the parent of incoming ninth and 11th graders, and I'm a member of REEL. I know that school reopening is a pressing issue for all of us right now, and I appreciate all of your hard work over these past months in managing a very difficult situation. I'd also like to comment on the code of conduct that you will vote to certify tonight. The school committee and the district's stated commitment to equity in our schools is a great start in building an anti-racist school district, as are the code of conduct's mention of restorative practices and interventions. But they're just that, a start. As others have mentioned and will mention, the deep and meaningful work of connecting with community members, especially those students and families desperately impacted by our current disciplinary practices, is essential to the culture change that restorative justice truly entails. Empowering youth to dialogue with each other and the other members of their communities is vital, not only for their personal development, but also for the development of our students as citizens of the world. We couldn't give a better gift or tool to our students than the skills to listen to and understand each other. We know that a restorative justice approach to discipline is different from our historical and current approach, and we know that our current approach harms all students, but disproportionately students of color and students with disabilities. For example, in the North Hampton Public Schools, students of color account for 30.7% of the population, but 50% of students disciplined. Restorative justice offers non-punitive, relationship-centered processes for avoiding and addressing harm and collaboratively solving problems. Research shows that restorative justice improves school climate, reduces suspension rates, increases graduation rates, enhances teacher and student satisfaction, and reduces racial disparities in discipline. The work of culture change is difficult and messy and rewarding, and we know that in our larger country and in our small town, it is imperative that we do this work together for our future. There may be resistance to change, and yet we are all learning the incredible value of flexibility, especially at this time. Most importantly, we agree that we all value our children, and most of all, and it is of utmost importance that we do whatever it takes to eliminate injustice and inequity in our schools. I urge the committee and the administration to take the time to fully understand what the code of common code of conduct commitments to restorative practices truly mean, to conscientiously involve the MPS community in conversations, planning, and implementing these big changes. I urge the committee to hold the district accountable for this learning and community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. The next person who has their hand raised to speak is Annie Salsich.
Hi, my name is Annie Salsich. I live in Ward Three. I'm a parent to a third grader at Bridge Street. I work on national youth justice issues, and I'm also a member of the local Racial Equity and Learning Group, now as REEL. Thank you for all you're doing to support our district right now in these exhausting and trying times. I sincerely hope that you and your families are doing okay. I wanted to speak to one of tonight's agenda items as well, that of the code of conduct. I was a member of the code of conduct committee representing REEL. It was an honor to work alongside so many dedicated school representatives in that work. I'm here to ask the school committee to commit to two things following the review and ratification of the code. First, to commit to ensuring that there are inclusive forums and dialogues with school members, teachers, staff, students, and caregivers around how to ensure that the implementation of the code is done with a fierce commitment toward racial equity. We at REEL were under the impression that the second year of the code of conduct committee's work was added in order specifically to focus on racial equity and to invite greater inclusion of families and students into the revision process. That didn't happen, and we are asking and hoping that it happens going forward in this context with a focus on implementation and feedback. Second, to commit to defining what the revised code means by restorative practices and interventions, and establishing a plan for training and supporting staff on those interventions. Restorative justice in schools can be a direct and incredibly effective way to tackle racial inequities and build healthier school climates and student outcomes. We absolutely celebrate and advocated for an introduction of this frame in North Hampton. However, we're worried that the language of restorative justice is being inserted in North Hampton's code without a real discussion of what is meant by that or a real understanding of what it takes to do it. Restorative justice is not a program or a singular strategy, nor is it the same as responsive classrooms or PBIS. It is a much larger approach to culture and community building in schools that requires candid and committed dialogue about and reckoning with racial inequities. It would be amazing if North Hampton took on a restorative justice approach in schools and used this year to grapple with what that could look like and to do so in close partnership with students, teachers, and staff, and with a laser focus on race equity. I know that things and all of us are incredibly stretched thin right now, and it may seem unrealistic to try to take on something like this in the midst of current circumstances. And we're not asking that it be done immediately. Just that we, as a district, take this year to imagine and to plan for this new approach that is referenced in the revised code but has yet to be defined or designed. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anyone else at this point who wishes to speak in public comment? That was the timer. Is is there anyone else who wishes to speak either who's on the Zoom or who is calling in by telephone, if you can let me know? Okay, I do not see anyone else, so that will conclude our public comment for this evening. Thank you to everyone who's offered comment to the school committee. At this point, I am going to ask that the school committee move into the executive session portion of the agenda, so that we can take care of some very important business early on in the meeting and and then come back out and resume the rest of the special meeting items. Um, I've got some hands from Member Seraphie Cox, as well as Member Levy. Member Seraphie Cox.
I was going to make a motion. Uh, I don't know if that's what Member Levy's hand is up for, so.
Um, I would, well, uh, Member Levy, do you have a question?
Um, I just want to articulate a hope that I, I don't know how long our executive session will be, but if it's looking at any point like it's gonna go past, say, nine o'clock, my hope is that we can communicate to the folks who are currently um, attending this meeting to let them know that the meeting is, our executive session is going that long so that they are not waiting around without some kind of communication from us.
Uh, we can certainly do that. Yes, we can certainly make communication back and forth between the two meetings.
Which, which we were able to do that on Thursday, too. They were, they were communicated with. It was difficult to give them answers because there was no way to say when executive session was going to end, but just to thank them for waiting.
Right, I guess we would have figured that rather than just tell them that it's going, which I guess they will, they will be able to figure out, but be able to say if it goes past this time that we're not actually going to come back because I think it's unfair to have people wait indefinitely.
That'll be, I guess that'll be a decision of the school committee because it would entail us basically, um, you know, postponing the rest of our meeting to a future date. And this will be the second time we've done that. So I, it's not something I can unilaterally decide. We'll have to decide that as a school committee. Um, but we'll certainly try to keep the public informed. I don't foresee us having as long an executive session um, as we did on Thursday. Uh, and I see the Chair of the Negotiations Subcommittee shaking her head and other members of the committee shaking their heads. So I'm hopeful that we'll be, and that, that's three, three head shake right there. So I'm hopeful we'll be rejoining you shortly, so, but we'll certainly keep folks abreast of what's happening. But Member Seraphie Cox, you had your hand raised to make a motion.
Indeed, um, I would like to move uh, to enter executive session under Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, A Two and A Three, to discuss strategy and preparation for collective bargaining and to conduct collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares.
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Um, and um, I will ask the clerk to call the whole school committee.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narkowitz?
Yes, and if I could just ask folks to mute their, their, um, mute themselves during the meeting. Thank you, so we can have a word. Thanks, go ahead.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
And Member Levy? The vote is unanimous, and I am going to now transfer hosting.
I actually have to make some required legal announcements before you do that. Um, and that's just to inform the public that we are now moving into an executive session, um, because to have this conversation in uh, open session would be detrimental to the school committee's uh, negotiating a position. I also need to inform you that we will um, resume, we will return to open session. Um, and as you heard earlier, we will try to give updates, but we do, we will be returning to open session. Um, so now you can go ahead, Annie, and um.
Thank you, thank you, pardon. Uh, I'm going to make Principal Beth Shokat the host while we go into executive session, and I hope the whole school committee and everyone else that is going into executive session has the link that was sent to you this afternoon. All right, terrific.
We are live again.
Hey, this is Mayor David Narcoits, letting folks know that the school committee is returning to its open session, a special meeting. We were just in executive session and we've now come back into open session and will resume our regularly scheduled agenda. We would normally move, we've completed the public comment period, we would normally move to announcements. But I am going to make a slight adjustment in the, in the agenda at this point. And I'm going to ask us to take up in section six, old business, item B, which is a vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the school committee and NACE. And I would ask for a motion from our chair of the negotiation subcommittee to, to, to take that up.
Thank you. Um, I would like to move ratification of the memorandum of agreement by and between the Northampton Public Schools and the Northampton Association of School Employees.
Second.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded and just for the public's understanding this, to clarify, this is a memorandum of agreement related to the remote learning period that begins tomorrow. Am I correct?
Indeed.
Okay, so just in the nick of time. Okay, is there any discussion among the school committee about this or questions about it? Okay.
Yes, if I, I had my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. For one thing, I just want to thank every member of NACE who participated in the democratic process of your union in the, in the formation of the goals and, and objectives related to your return to work. I also want to thank every member of the public who reached out to every member of the school committee about your thoughts on school reopening and the various options and, and all of the challenges that we as a community have faced and are hopefully facing together. This memorandum of, of agreement is our first step towards, towards reopening the schools, not the first step, but a major step. I also want to let folks know that there will be a tentative agreement coming at a subsequent meeting that will be ratified at the next meeting. And, and that, at, at, whatever the next school committee meeting is, that that ratification would happen at that meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. And Annie, could you also give me co-host authority as well? I was trying to lower people's hands, but I can't do it anymore, so.
I, I think that I need to be made host by Principal Chikat. So.
Give up the power, Principal Chikat, to us?
I gave power to the mayor. Can someone undo my power?
Sure, I'll be happy.
You have all the power, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll work, I'll work on that. But first, we've got a, a motion that's been made and seconded, and I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
And member Voss?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. And again, thank you to our negotiation subcommittee and to NACE and to Dr. Provost and our council and our, our business manager for all their many hours in, in reaching this agreement. So now we'll return to, back up to the top of our agenda. Item three, which is announcements, are there any announcements from members of the school committee? And if you could raise your hands if anyone has any announcements to make. Okay, I don't see any announcements. So next, we will take up the consent agenda. These are recommended actions and there initially were three items listed on our consent agenda. But in fact, we only have one that's ready or needs to be voted on tonight. And that's the school committee minutes of June 11th, 2020. So I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
I, oh, is that member Goldman?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so member Condon made the motion, member Goldman seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda will, will signify when the roll is called by saying yes and we'll call the roll.
Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
And member Gold?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is we have a vote on some donations. The first is the donation of a piano from Julie Karos, which is valued at $2,750. I would ask for a motion to accept that gift.
Mr. Mayor, I think that was under the consent agenda.
Hmm. Uh, it's actually.
Am I wrong?
I don't believe it was. I believe we typically vote on gifts separately out, not part of the consent agenda. So yeah, this, this is not one that was part of the consent agenda.
Okay, sorry for the interruption.
No problem. So is there a motion to approve that? I mean, I do, I do see it as item C, but typically we vote on gifts outside of the consent agenda.
I, I'll make a motion to accept the gift of the piano for $2,750 from Julie Karos.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by member Goldman. Okay, is there any discussion about this? Okay, so I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy? Member Goldman?
Yes.
Yes, I, I heard you remember Levy, thank you. Member Goldman, yes. Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
The vote.
And thank you.
Okay, um, so the next item is a donation of $30,000, Project Lead the Way. And perhaps John or Kami want to just give us some background on this?
Sure. So you may recall from the time of the budget, we were requesting a grant from Project Lead the Way in order to launch a program at the high school, which would be a continuation of the program we have at the middle school. It actually comes in the form of a gift. So this is the startup, startup money for Project Lead the Way, which is being initiated this year at the high school.
Who does the gift actually come from? It's from the foundation or?
I, it's, I think the organization is actually called Project Lead the Way that provides the, the gift, the grant. Maybe Kim can correct me on that if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay, great. So I would entertain a motion to accept this donation from Project Lead the Way?
Second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the members, the motions made by member Goldman, seconded by member Kaufman. Any further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busanski?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narcoits?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, excellent. And I will just note for the school committee that we are now ahead of schedule on our agenda. We were supposed to be at eight o'clock and we're at seven thirty-eight, so I think we should, you know, remember this moment and hope it occurs again in the future. So I.
Tonight, we have.
Exactly. So tonight, we, we would, we would normally move on to reports and recommendations. We do have some items that we have had under old business that we have put off and put off and put off several meetings now. And so I made a commitment to, to bring that up earlier in the meeting because it had been pushed off so many times. And this is a member Levy's update on the diversity, equity and inclusion job description. And so I'll turn to member Levy if you want to discuss that now, member Levy.
Thanks. Can y'all hear me?
Okay.
So the, the idea, like many months ago, when we first talked about this, was to be more intentional about the skills and abilities that we're looking for in our candidates. And also to then be able to, if those are articulated in the job description, to then have those directly impact the job ads or job postings and then directly impact the search processes themselves. So that if those competencies are a part of the job description, it makes it much easier for search committees to be able to infuse them into the search process. So the idea is that there would be diversity, equity and inclusion language that is, I, I think we've already agreed on sort of a, a tagline that goes in every job description. But then there would also be a piece under the duties and responsibilities that is specific to the job itself. And then there would be a, a piece under qualifications as well. I emailed you or Annie sent on my email that has sample language. The thing about this is that it's going to very much vary based on the actual position, what the appropriate language will be. So there is sample language to use as, as the HR department is, is writing the, the job descriptions or working with the folks who are writing the job descriptions on the leadership team. So the idea is not necessarily approve specific language, but to approve the, the spirit behind the language. So I'm not sure if folks have questions about that.
Does anyone have any questions? Member Goldman, you have your hand up.
Oh, thank you. I had a question from something before, so I'm all set. But thank you so much for your perseverance and patience in bringing this forward, member Levy. Much appreciated.
Member Condon?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, member Levy, I, I very much agree with the spirit of this. My concern comes with the, the minimum qualifications. So the, the first one listed is experience with or commitment to working with a diverse community, which I like. But then pretty much every other minimum qualification says that they already have experience, significant experience in some cases. So I feel like we're, we're kind of limiting ourselves to, if someone hasn't worked with a diverse community, then we won't even consider them, even though they might be willing to commit to that. I guess that's my one concern.
Yeah, so again, it's not that we would use all of these, it's that we would pick the one that's most appropriate for the position itself. So if it were a more entry level position, simply having a commitment to working within a diverse and inclusive community would suffice. If we're looking at more, more seasoned teaching position or administrative position, we would want to see a serious, serious commitment to and also experience with. So I think it, it depends on the position and the idea is to give some latitude to the, to the folks to be able to choose amongst those options, to be able to pick whichever one is most appropriate.
Okay, are there other, other questions for member Levy about this? Obviously, we don't, we don't have a, a vote or anything scheduled, but any other questions or discussions? I would say, I remember Levy, you, you also had a topic a little later in the agenda, item eight, which was to just have a quick framing of a future discussion on anti-bias and anti- which was to just um have a quick framing of a future discussion on anti-bias and anti-racist curriculum, another item that's been pushed off several times. While you have the floor, do you wanna just uh uh also get that one um out there as well?
I do. Thank you. And I just wanna say, I hope member Seraphie Cox was timing that last one because I think you owe me a popsicle. Uh, so the um, I appreciate you moving this up. This has been something that I've been, I put on the agenda quite a a time ago in hopes of really starting a conversation on the school committee regarding articulating our support for an anti-bias, anti-racist curriculum. I'll use the term Abar, which Abar stands for anti-bias, anti-racist. Um, and for us to then use the same lens in the work that we do as a committee. This is especially relevant given given recent events. Um, but also I'll speak for myself when I say I chose to move to Northampton because of the progressive nature of the city and the commitment to social justice in the schools. And I I know that's true for a number of others as well. And while there's been a push by some teachers and administrators towards Abar work in the schools, I think our students, families, and educators would benefit if this effort is district-wide. All students in every grade, regardless of which school they go to or which teacher they are assigned to, should be immersed in a learning environment where they develop a love and understanding of themselves, of people whose identities and experiences are different from their own, where they learn to think critically about the messages they receive from society, where they're nurtured and encouraged to identify the injustices around them and where they're empowered to use their voice to work towards equity and justice in the schools and in the communities. There's a strong desire held by many who serve on the District Improvement Plan Committee to bring a focus to Abar work in our district. And among other things, I think a commitment from us would help empower the DIP Committee to include Abar in the upcoming District Improvement Plan. I think there are a few critical opportunities for us as a school committee. One is to articulate our desire as a school committee that the district fully dedicate the time and resources towards Abar work that are necessary for it to drive our curriculum, our policies, and our practices. While I hope some professional development may be directed towards Abar this year, we need to go further by articulating district-wide goals and by dedicating funding in our next budget season for ongoing professional development and support to bring in Abar lens to every thread of every piece of the curriculum and beyond. And this is not a separate curriculum, and it's not inserting scripted lessons into the already existing curriculum. It's about ensuring our math lessons are approached through an Abar lens. It's about our recess monitors guiding our students through an Abar lens. It's about using an Abar lens in our community building. It's about developing critical literacy in our students and ourselves and analyzing what books and resources we're using, whose perspectives are being told, and and who's are left out. It's also about following through with commitments we make regarding initiatives like restorative practices and ensuring authentic community engagement and involvement, funding, and also support. Um, in order for us to commit to Abar, we need to also commit to bringing this lens to our own work as a school committee. I was delighted when we unanimously passed a resolution on equity, but in that same meeting, people shared perspectives that were counter to that resolution. I don't bring this up to shame or denigrate anyone or anyone's perspectives or to say people shouldn't be able to speak freely, but merely to say that if we're gonna make this commitment to equity work and to work that's anti-basis and anti-ba- or sorry, anti-racist and anti-bias, as I think a lot of us would would very much like to, we have a need for some education ourselves as to what that means in terms of our own actions and what lens we should be using to consider our own work and priorities. There's a group of educators and community members actively working to develop an Abar approach in our district, looking at what's currently taking place and considering how to bring this lens to our curriculum. It's my hope that we as a school committee can support these efforts and take them a step further through strategic planning, whose end result is a district-wide commitment to bringing in Abar lens to our curriculum policies and practices. My hope is to hear your thoughts, and if it so pleases the committee, to come back with a more formal plan to submit for approval. This plan could involve a working group, which may or may not formalize the group that's already working, depending on their desires, but which assesses where the district currently is, sets goals, and creates an action plan that could be supported by next year's budget. I think this could have significant success if the weight of the school committee is behind it. But again, I'd appreciate your input. Is this something you think is worth pursuing? Um, and do you have any questions to clarify?
Are there any questions um for uh member Levy? And again, um, this is one of these items on our new agenda format that's really um uh, again, to get feedback on ideas that members have um to put something on a future agenda to be able to have a more substantive discussion about it. So um, so providing member Levy with some feedback, brief feedback tonight that could then frame um a more substantive discussion of something brought to a future meeting would be helpful. Member Fallon?
Thank you. Um, thank you, member Levy. I really appreciate everything you had to say, and I am completely supportive of doing this work. I what I guess I wanna say is, I think what you were saying about parsing it out or breaking it down, I think to make it manageable for us, it would be helpful to sort of divide it up into various areas. Like this is the policy area, this is this, this is that, um to sort of organize the work and then be able to have kind of an overview, so we're not working in isolated areas. Um, and so that we can sort of meet as a group, do the work, and then get back together and have a general understanding of where that work is heading going into um the District Improvement Plan and the budget process. So I know our school committee, the quarterly meetings are generally devoted to this um student achievement. I think that that is actually tied fairly intimately with um this work in many ways. And so that would be my suggestion is that we maybe as a committee um try to meet and and discuss how we will divide up this work and the best way to manage it, um because I do think it's worthy of discussion, but I don't know what my colleagues think.
Member Goldman, you have your hand up next.
Thank you. Um, something I'm interested in learning more about is um sort of what you have in mind. Do are you talking about, like I'm, I'd like a better description of what my role would be um in in this project or in this work. So what are the aspects around curriculum, the students, the teachers, uh educators, administrators? And also for us as school committee members, am I approving a curriculum? Or um, what are the ways where I can be a role model and meet? Make sure that I have a full understanding to endorse the work in the schools? So. Thank you.
I wasn't sure. Is that a question for right now or like to bring back in our later conversation?
I think that's something I'd like you to consider as you bring back a formal sort of agenda for approaching um Abar in our district.
Thank you.
Member Kaufman?
Yeah, I'll just say um real quickly, thank you, member Levy. That was incredibly well thought out and nice presentation. We don't, uh you know, I'm trying to think back when we've done this before where a member just kind of has a real passion for something and brings it for a li- uh preliminary sort of guidance before putting in an extensive amount of work. But I compliment you and and we know we're gonna, if we're gonna move in this direction and we're gonna lead, we're going to need somebody to put in a lot of work. This is not gonna be easy, but um I suspect you are um um the right person for the job and you have a passion for this and you have the experience with this. Uh, just a just a a vote of uh confidence in you and uh thank you for bringing it up. And yes, I would definitely support the idea of you taking it to the next level with a more uh well-articulated plan. Uh, just specifically, I I do, I am interested in learning a little bit more about this working group. Um, I wasn't fully aware of who they are or who they represent, so between now and then, um, if you know that, unless it's a quick answer now, um that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Member Voss?
Thank you, and thank you for, I'll just echo what everybody has already said. Thank you so much. Um, I fully support um more discussion and moving this forward in the way you articulated. And one other idea would be to consider our retreat this year, um that we usually have an annual retreat, and this might make a good topic for that. Thanks.
Um, could I just ask, how does this relate to the District Improvement Plan and the work that's happening around the DIP? Like, how does this tie in with that? It seems like it's very relevant. I'm just curious where that, how that fits and what your thoughts are on that.
Sure. Um, there are some folks on the District Improvement Plan Committee who have been thinking about this and talking about this. And I think our support uh from the school committee could help really give uh uh help bolster their efforts to say if this is something that we are envisioning for the district to to help put some teeth into the work within the District Improvement Plan. Um, and it could also, I think, very much go hand in hand that uh some of the goals that come out of the District Improvement Plan could speak to this commitment. And then there's a chance that if there is a working group, as some have suggested, that perhaps that's the group that is that is helping to guide some of the work. Although my understanding is that the District Improvement Plan would be carried out by the specifically by the administrators and what I'm thinking of is a a broader group. So I think there's still some figuring out of that. But I think there's an opportunity for one to to support the other and vice versa.
Okay. Okay, um any other discussion or questions or comments? Um, remember Levy, again, this is like a, this is an item to sort of sound out colleagues and see if there's interest in in bringing something, you know, a discussion to the school committee um to put on the agenda. And um so it sounds like you're hearing that that's is something that uh can be pursued and you can obviously work with the um agenda-setting team to figure out what in the best way or timing of bringing something back, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so um we will now uh return to the um item uh section five of the agenda, which is reports and recommendations. Um, and we have a series of policies um which require, uh well, in some cases, first and second reading and votes. Um, and some of them are quite time-sensitive in terms of the reopening of school and policies that we need to have in place uh for the reopening of school, um not including remote learning. Um, and so I'll turn this over to um member Fallon. Um, I believe these policies have all been distributed to you. Um, some of them are quite lengthy in terms of um eight pages long. So uh unless the committee is um intent that she read all eight pages, I would dispense with the reading and just ask that she provide a good summary of what each policy does and what the um what the role is um in terms of adding to our current policy. So I'll turn it over to member uh Fallon uh from Rules and Policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so the first policy um on the agenda was Policy EBC, which is emergency plans. And the reason this came up was uh when I brought Policy EBC supplemental to you, the pandemic policy, um I looked at our, which was meant to be a po- uh supplement to Policy EBC. I realized that our Policy EBC, which is dated from two thousand three, um was actually um not up to date and um not no longer compliant with um Massachusetts general law. So um in two thousand fourteen, um statutory changes were made to Mass General Law, Chapter sixty-nine, Section eight A. The requirements of Section seven of Chapter two eighty-four of the Acts of two thousand fourteen were added, which stipulate that um local police and fire authorities need to be involved in the plan development and responsibility.
Member Fallon?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Um, member Seraphie Cox was removed from the meeting. There she is, okay. She was messaging me to get her back in the meeting.
Okay, are we all set? Um, emergency response plans are also now required to be shared with these local authorities whenever plans change, and they must be reviewed with them at least annually. Um, emergency response plans are also required to be drilled with students annually in the fall. And so it's really important that our policy um reflect those changes and that it comply with the law. Um, we are, we have been doing so in practice, um but ideally uh we will have the appropriate policy in place. Um, so um I am bringing to you Policy EBC, um the the uh Massachusetts Association of School Committees' model policy tonight um that I would move to adopt as is.
Um, so this one is on our agenda as a first reading. Um, so are you asking that we um suspend rules and um and actually approve it tonight?
So this one is the one that is the probably the least time-sensitive. Um, that would be, that would, I mean, it is not in compliance with Massachusetts general law, but it's the only one that could theoretically wait for a second reading next month, uh on the twenty-fourth of September.
Okay. Well, you were moving it to approve. So I I was just trying to understand the context of your motion.
Yeah, so I'm sorry. I'm bringing this to you at a first reading. It is not on the agenda for a vote.
Okay, fine.
Um, I.
So I guess my question would be, does anyone have any questions about EBC before we move on to ACAB? I don't see any, so um we'll consider that as having been a first reading.
Okay, uh, so next, uh, these are actually really um sort of emergency policies. So the U.S. Department of Education adjo- adopted new Title IX regulations, which went into effect on August fourteenth. Um, our current harassment policy, Policy ACAB, um does need to be updated. Um, I will tell you that the model policy that the MASC had issued was problematic in that if we were to substitute our current policy with the model policy that the MASC issued, it would eliminate the harassment protection for staff, um as the new model only applies the protection to students. Um, the Title IX policy does protect staff. I'm discussing both policies right now to give you sort of a background. Um, the Title IX policy does protect staff if we adopt the Title IX process for both grievance procedures and investigations. Um, so in light of the fact that our general harassment policy, which is Policy ACAB, offered stronger protections for victims and the possibility for more equitable um investigations, our attorney, um Lila Grace, Lila Taylor, um recommended that we both update our current policy, ACAB, um to be more current and comprehensive, and that we, in addition, adopt a separate Title IX complaint and grievance process policy, which is on the agenda as Title IX, but is gonna be titled Policy ACABA um to comply with the new federal regulations. I know it's confusing. Um, but the federal regulations um are not quite as strong as the regulations um that we had previously, and we felt that it was appropriate to keep both policies. Um, they are on here as first readings. Um, however, um I would ask that we uh suspend our rules to pass both of these um for a sec, to have the first reading and second reading this evening because the federal uh regulations are already in effect, and we have several um requirements as far as notifying families and staff of these regulations, posting them on our websites. Um, so it is imperative that we get this Title IX um sexual harassment procedures and grievance process posted and that we have an updated um uh Policy ACAB, the prohibition against sexual harassment and other forms of harassment and discrimination um uh available. So I would actually ask that we suspend the rules. I don't know if that has to be done as two separate votes, Mayor?
We can do it in one motion. Move to suspend rules and and approve on on.
Policy.
Policy, yeah.
Okay, so I do wanna tell the committee that this has, this was, this policy, ACAB, was produced and uh I've worked on this extensively with our attorney. Um, and so um, I am com- I am comfortable in passing it um on a first reading and suspending our rules uh because it has undergone um very close examination and it was actually produced by our lawyer. Um, so I would uh move to suspend our rules and approve Policy ACAB. prohibition against sexual harassment and other forms of harassment and discrimination. Second that.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. Uh, member Levy, you have your hand up.
Thanks. Uh, member Fallon, I really appreciate your articulating that the Title IX regulations coming from the federal government are not nearly as um strong as we would likely want them to be, uh because that's been my understanding. And I appreciate that we've got this accompanying document to make up for that. My question is, um, since my understanding is that this is, A C A B is not new, but it's revised. Can you help point us to what the revisions are? Are there a lot? Are there a few? Are they substantial? Are they grammatical?
Um, if you pull up the old Policy A C A B, I'm sorry, I did not highlight them for you. If you're comparing them, um. Sorry, I'm going through and trying to identify them. I don't have them highlighted myself. In the future, asking me in advance would be really great.
Maybe in the future, just highlighting them as a practice could be helpful, highlighting the changes.
Right. Yeah, I think that um they, I mean, you, yeah, you guys can always compare the two documents side by side yourself. Obviously, all of our policies are online on file. Um, but looking at the two, it would appear that for the most part, um it's adding in the Title IX language and um updating the references, um and adding in the the new federal regulations, um updating the um legal references and the cross references. And I think that that's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I mostly just.
Yeah.
Like major subs- like substantial changes that we should really be thinking about, or if it was really just uh minor changes to comply with the law, so.
No, it was mostly, and we had gone and added in um dis- language and discrimination, if you recall, around pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, um and that needed to be updated. That wasn't in this particular policy, and so we added in the the language. It was originally just a sexual harassment policy, and now it's against, it's a sexual harassment and other forms of harassment and dis- discrimination combined. Um, and so that language was also included in there, our language for our other policies against discrimination on the basis of those protected classes.
Um, member Kaufman, you have your hand raised next.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. One other piece.
Okay.
The, my question is, and I'm I'm looking to see if it's under, if it's here. Um, but I would love to see written into the policy that we prohibit um harassment or discrimination based on the real or perceived uh and then all of these different protected classes. And feel free to to tell me to read closer if it's already in there and I've missed it. But I think, again, protecting folks from discrimination, not just because they hold those identities, but because somebody may perceive them to hold those identities, is important.
Are you looking for that, member Fallon?
I am. I I'm sorry, after reading through this, the code of conduct and the other policy, I know the language is in one of the three, and I'm trying to find it. It's a lot of pages. Just for future reference, I know I mentioned it during last meeting. When there are questions like this in advance of the meeting, it would be really helpful, um particularly when it's um questions for policies like this that are of a legal nature. Um, if you all could have submitted questions to the superintendent in advance, because I am very reluctant to make changes to a policy um without having our lawyer approve them.
Sure, sorry. My understanding was that we were supposed to do that after the first reading and between the first reading and the second reading. But since you would suspended the rules, I didn't know that that needed to happen at this.
Superintendent, could you weigh in on whether this needs to happen before the first day of school?
Well, the the timeliness issue is that the regulations that came out from the federal government said basically districts were to comply immediately upon the issuance of the regulations. And so that's why we have this issue of timeliness. Um, I a- as to the issue of perceived, I'm I'm actually looking for that right now. I will also answer sort of the general question on what I see as the main difference in the new Title IX procedure. I think it really has to do with the investigation. And the main changes I see it is the investig- the finder of fact and the imposer of discipline need to be two different individuals. And so that is um something that I think would be timely to have in effect, since we have um staff and students um coming into contact with each other um already, as a matter of fact.
So I'm I'm fully supportive of our passing this because it needs to be passed and then adding that language on the policy committee later, if we need to add that later. I just think it just seems like if we were gonna pass something and then probably not revisit it for some time, that if we should get it as right as we can.
I think that's a great solution, member Levy. Just get the thing updated, get it in place, and then we can get, and we can get to the attorney and have them look at it, and then we can bring forward another. We can always change our policies. We can always make edits or additions, so that would be a good solution. Um, so um, member Kaufman, you had your hand up and.
Yep, thank you. Um, I like that solution a lot, too. This one is, you know, A A C A B is so comprehensive. It brings me a lot of uh comfort in knowing that member Fallon shared this with um our attorney. But we don't want to get this wrong. In fact, we want to get this right. But it's, there's so much here, it it doesn't feel particularly right in rushing it. And I don't know who the eyes are on this that need to really look it through. It's a little surprising. It sounds like the entire um house, Rules and Policy Subcommittee hasn't looked at it, because, member Levy, you're on there, correct? So I I don't, I'm a little confused as to only, why only one person has looked it in. I assume that's because it's so hard to find, get people together, and there was a rush. So I, you know, I'm not accusing anything, but I do think this one in particular would benefit from more sets of eyes. It is critically important, and it's so complicated, and we need to get it right. So I I like that solution. If there's a, an issue of getting it, I think what we have here is probably fine, as long as there's a commitment to revisiting it. Um, if that's what we're saying, I'm in full agreement. I did have a a quick question, member Fallon, around Title IX, uh the the Title IX um policy. And then I was, I'm just wondering if our uh, if Lisa Safran has had an opportunity to look this over? I see Dr. Provost nodding his head.
Yes, yes, both uh Lisa and I, as well as Leila, gave input to this revision.
Okay, and they're okay with it? They're they're, uh, they like it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that's it.
Just to be clear, um, member Kaufman, this came to you, this came to you and the mayor and the superintendent as the agenda setting team as a question. I brought it to you when I said, just so you all know, it's August thirteenth, and the federal legislate, the the federal regulations go into effect to- tomorrow. We need to update our policies, and now we have a problem because we haven't. Um, and asked whether we should have this go through Subcommittee or whether it should be done at the whole committee level. Um, and so you all gave me the recommendation to have it go straight to the full committee um with and work on it with Leila, um our attorney. So that's, that's why it hasn't gone through the Subcommittee. It was because I became aware of the federal regulations going into effect and kind of re, you know, said, hey, we need to do something, and quickly. Um, and so that was what the, I guess, the three of you decided. But that was definitely the answer I got, was that it would be dealt with at the full committee level.
Okay, um, so any other questions about this? There's been a motion made and seconded to suspend rules and adopt tonight, so we have it in place. And um obviously, there can be further, um, like as with any of our policies, there can be further uh discussion of it and review of it and and further changes going forward. I hear no further questions. I see no further hands, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narkwitz.
Yes.
And member Busansky.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, so um continue, uh, member Fallon.
Thanks. So the next one is the brand-new policy, the Title IX regulations, that we've titled Policy A C A B A. Um, it's the North Hampton Public Schools Title IX Sexual Harassment Procedures and Grievance Process. Um, it sets forth the the goals for promoting a workplace and school environment that's free of sexual harassment. Um, and it has the definitions uh listed. It's got supportive measures, um and it has, most importantly, um our Title IX coordinator, Lisa Safran, who's the Director of Health, Safety and Equity Programs for the North Hampton Public Schools, named. Um, it lists the complaint procedure um and um timeframes um and investigation um and the requirements uh and resolutions, investigations, and the clear um distinction that the Title IX coordinator will designate an investigator and a decision maker, who may not be the same person. Um, and that there will be a written determination of responsibility um by the decision maker um and the timeframes in which that needs to be submitted. And then, of course, the appeal process, the record-keeping process, um and where you can appeal to external agencies um if you have a complaint um to file. And um and then all the legal references and cross references. And once again, this was, you know, given to us by um our legal counsel. I asked all the questions that I had, and um she made some adjustments based on um the few questions I raised about um language being confusing or not, not straightforward. Um, but I know that this is a lot, and it's complicated, and it's a long document. Um, but I would, I, I mean, it, we were supposed to have this on the books. As of August fourteenth, school starts tomorrow. I would move to um suspend our rules and pass this on the first reading. Um, and if necessary, we can put this on the agenda in the future for any changes that need to be made.
So you want to adopt it?
I do, as presented.
Okay, fine. Um, so is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, is there any um, any discussion or questions? Again, same as before, trying to get something that we're required to have in place on the books and updated, um but can always be revisited. Okay, seeing no hands, hearing no discussion, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narkwitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, now we will move on to the next set, which are second reading and uh and our schedule for a vote this evening.
Thanks. Um, yeah, so just to be clear with the committee, these, once again, these are on here for a second reading and vote, but these did not go through the pause, the Rules and Policy Subcommittee. These are sort of uh not emergency, but really time-sensitive policies that we had hoped to pass sooner. Things have gotten a little insane, um and I worked on these with uh the superintendent, with Meredith O'Leary, the Public Health um Director, with uh Lisa Safran um and the superintendent. The first one is uh Policy E B C F A. It's a face coverings policy for the North Hampton Public School District. Um, uh, it is essentially, um, the M A S C provided a model policy, and then uh I amended it with uh the group of people that I just mentioned to you. So um it talks about how, uh, in accordance with guidance from the CDC, um D E S I and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the following requirements are in place until further notice. Um, that all, a face covering that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds, and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. Um, it gives the list of reasons per CDC guidance that an individual may be excused, which is they have trouble breathing, are unconscious, are incapacitated, or cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance. Um, in addition, mask or face coverings are not required for anyone who has a medical behavioral other challenge making it unsafe to wear a face or mask, face mask or face covering. Exceptions to this policy must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. Um, in yellow, I have the language that I added along with the group that I consulted with. Uh, face shields that wrap around the sides of the wearer's face and extend below the chin. Hooded face shields or physical barriers may provide an alternative in some cases. Um, you'll see in red is the language that the M A S C had that uh we struck from the the sample policy that they had provided. Um, additionally, face masks or face coverings will not be required when appropriate social distancing is enforced during mask breaks, while eating or drinking, uh, and while outside. Um, we also um added in language that all students in grades pre-K through twelve will be required to wear a mask, which is to be provided by the student's family. Um, and that the following types of masks or face coverings are acceptable to wear at school. Uh, only disposable surgical masks that must be replaced daily and cannot be reused or washed. Fabric masks, preferably at least two layers, um and face shields when worn along with a surgical or fabric mask. Um, the following types of masks, face coverings are not acceptable to wear at school as data is currently inconclusive as to their efficacy. Masks with vents, neck gaiters, and bandanas. Uh, plastic face shields alone without a fabric or surgical mask, unless granted an exception by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. Um, if students are in violation of this policy, the building principal will consult with the parent guardians to determine whether an exception is appropriate, or the student may be removed from the school building for in-person learning until such time as they can comply with the requirement or the requirement is lifted. Um, as I mentioned to you uh at our last meeting and during the first reading, that uh Unit B of N A S proposed a very short amendment to this language right there um and asked that the language saying during any exclusion, the student will be required to attend their remote learning schedule. Um, and that violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy. Um, and that it remain, this policy remains in place until rescinded by the school committee. So um this is a second reading and vote. Um, I would move uh to accept this policy as presented, um and I I would move to include the amendment that um that N A S proposed, um even if, just to move it on to the floor for discussion.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion, thoughts? Okay, again, Member Voss.
Sorry, I think I just have a couple of questions. And thank you, Member Fallon, for getting this all to us. And I know it's a lot of things. A question I have, I have two questions. One is, it says surgical mask. And I just want to make sure that we, I'm not sure I understand what the difference between a face mask, medical mask, and surgical mask is, but I think there might be a difference. And a lot of maybe what we've already purchased to give out to students might not be considered a surgical mask. So I don't know if anyone can help with that, but it seems relevant.
Mayor John has, the superintendent has his hand up.
Dr. Provost.
Thank you. Yeah, so the original version of this said a blue, a blue surgical mask. And at one point, I thought there was some kind of color code that I hadn't deciphered regarding the masks. Meredith said, why would you, why would you limit it by color? We should just call it surgical mask. So it is the, it is the type of, some kind of fiber mask. And I'm not sure if it's cotton or some other material that it's made of. It's the same type of mask that we have purchased as PPE for all of our staff and students. So if surgical sounds like a difficult adjective for you, we could say face mask or ear loop face mask or anything like that.
So, oops. So I, what I, I don't want to pass a policy that says something that we're not going to abide by. So I can Google around and find the appropriate word, but I think, I'll let, I'll let you go, Dr. Provost. Maybe you have something to add.
Yeah, Lisa Safron just texted me, we should use the word disposable there.
Instead of surgical?
Yes.
Well, so it says disposable surgical masks, so just leave it as disposable mask then?
Yeah.
I have a second. When this conversation's over, I have another question, but if people have more comments on this.
So, so is that, is that an amendment you'll accept to that, Member Fallon?
If Lisa Safron gave it her blessing.
Okay, so a friendly amendment would be just to remove that word surgical. Okay. Member Voss, do you want to continue?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there was discussion about, I have to go back to the document. Sorry.
While she's looking, can I just add, Mayor, then, that I would ask that where we wrote plastic face shields alone without a fabric or surgical mask, that we also say without a fabric or disposable mask?
Sure.
Is it okay if I go ahead again?
Yeah.
Different screen, I can't see you. The face shields that wrap around the side of the wearer's face and extend below the chin. I just, if those are the surgical face shields, and I can understand why some people might prefer those, but if they're not airtight around the mouth and people are talking, I have concerns about that, protecting other people in the room. So I'm not, I guess I'd like to understand more of what is meant by that and what restrictions or things we could put in place. And the reason, I'll just say, the reason I'm so concerned is in the last few weeks, few months, it's become very clear that this virus primarily spreads through air. And if we just have a shield with nothing holding the virus in, it's not very safe for other people.
I will say that that language was added in by the Director of Public Health because we were, she was very clear that she didn't just want the face shield in the front, that she wanted it to be the one that wraps around both sides and extended below the chin. And that those are only offered as alternatives for students who absolutely can't wear them, can't wear anything else for other reasons, and that they would most likely be employed with secondary measures. And so there needed to be, I think, language in there for that reason. Superintendent, do you remember the rest of the conversation?
Yes, that's exactly what it was. This is a form of PPE that the Department of Education has asked us to get as a backup. There are some students who won't be able to wear a face mask for either medical reasons or for neurological reasons. And so if the student is not able to wear the face mask and the face shield is a backup, you're absolutely correct. It's not as protective as the face mask, but it provides some level of protection for students who can't wear a face mask.
Well, I guess this, for me, really brings two conflicts together. One is the right of the student to be there, but one is the concern that the student who's wearing this face shield, if they weren't asymptomatic carrier of COVID, would likely, would share their germs with the rest of the classroom, whether it be teachers or other students. So I'm not comfortable with that, given the state of the pandemic right now. I guess I would rather see an alternative such as that student would be, I don't know, barriers like talking on an iPad, but not in a room with other people for extended periods of time and being outside. It's not ideal for anyone. I don't know if Attorney Taylor has any comment. Maybe we have to pass this, but I'm expressing a concern with that piece of it.
I don't believe Attorney Taylor's on the call any longer.
Okay.
So.
I, I do remember from the conversation that this, like I said, that this was one of those things where we need, we need to be able to provide an alternative to the mask for students who absolutely can't wear a mask, but have a right to be in the school building, getting their education. And so I think that there, you know, we had discussed whether that would be, you know, whether we would have to use, I'm sorry, what do you call the plastic, the plexiglass dividers plus a face mask? Like there would, you know, these are the absolute exceptions that are only granted with both, with either the school nurse or Meredith O'Leary in consultation with the principal. But there needed to be language written in there that those exceptions need to be made for those students who can't wear a mask.
I guess I'm also, I'm just putting this out there. I'm struggling with it still. Can, during the remote phase, another exception could be remote, as much as possible, remote support as well. And I don't know if it belongs in this policy or where, but for us to have a policy now that we know how this spreads that enables a mask to not be tight is, remains problematic. I don't know how to fix, I don't know what to suggest. Maybe somebody else has an idea.
Dr. Provost, do you have your hand up?
I do. So the general rule with all of these situations is if the student is not able to provide as much protection for the staff member by wearing a face mask, then the staff member should use enhanced protection. As, as we said, the standard issue for most of our staff working in person with students is going to just be a face mask. But if they're working with one of these students who is unable to wear a face mask, that's when we go to some of the other types of PPE that we have purchased, but haven't really planned to distribute. So you may have a teacher wearing an N95 mask at that point, as well as a face shield, in order to compensate for the fact that the student that they're not working, that they're working with can't wear the face mask. They might have a plastic barrier between them and the student in order to compensate for the fact that the student's not wearing the face mask. So, and all of those situations would be things that we'd go over with the health staff in the school to make sure that we were doing as best we could to compensate for the student's inability to wear a face mask.
Thank you. That's reassuring, and I guess I'd like to add to that. Would we do, would we not have the student without the face mask in a classroom with other students? How would that work? And if that student was in a classroom with other students who were wearing face masks, would the families be made aware of that? Or would, how would we, would we protect those other students with, say, N95 masks? I appreciate the fact that you could protect the other people in the room. I hadn't thought of that. And I agree with that for the staff.
So I think as a practical matter, at least during the remote period, these would be students who'd be seen one-on-one, because it would be very impractical to try to provide the rest of the students in the space with the same type of protection that I just described.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so is there any other questions at this point? Again, we are trying to get a face policy, face covering policy in effect. We've got a motion made with a few tweaks to remove the surgical references and add disposable or clarify the disposable. Is there any further question or discussion? Member Fallon.
And number three, we also need to replace surgical with disposable.
Okay, so essentially a search and replace for.
Thank you, yes.
Undisposable, okay. Member Voss, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd just like to offer, going back to it, under the part about the shields that wrap around the sides, just slight edit. I'm happy for other suggestions that makes it very clear that this is an exception. That second, it says, "exceptions: This policy must be approved by the building principal," blah, blah, blah. And then I think if we replace the period there with a semicolon, I'd be happy, where it says face shields that wrap, just to be very clear that those are the exceptions and they're part of what has to be approved. It's implied, but I just want to make it very clear.
Could we say, like, "exceptions: This policy must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health as face shields that wrap around, etc., may provide an alternative in some instances?"
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'm sort of allowing some liberal editing here as we go. I'm a little concerned because the parliamentarian has raised her hand, but I'll recognize Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes, I had tried to raise my hand before when we were having the discussion about surgical versus disposable because our memorandum of agreement with NACE states surgical loop masks. So I think that that is what it should say, because that is a legal binding document, and so it should be aligned. Sorry.
No problem, thank you. So, Member Fallon, how does that affect the changes that you've suggested we accept or not accept?
We initially had the word surgical mask in there, the surgical mask in there. I'm happy to add the word loop. It was Member Voss that struggled with the word surgical and wanted to replace it with disposable. So I think that I'm fine with, I agree with Member Seraphie Cox. It's Member Voss that probably needs to agree.
Well, I'll give a little more of the backstory. I fully agree with surgical. I think that's what we should have. I can't remember the details of the email, but when we were asked to order this PPP many months ago, I emailed a question about the difference between these, and I think there is potentially a difference. And I don't know what we got. But I agree that we should have something that is as good as possible. And I just wanted to be careful of how it was worded.
I'll be honest, I, I understand what you're saying, and I understand the policy is important, but I don't know who, do you know the difference if you see one between a disposable mask and a surgical mask with ear loops? Do we expect a classroom teacher to know the difference? I'm just saying, like, as far as an enforcement question, that's, I mean, the policy's only as good as, as well as it's, you know, enforced. And so I guess that's what I'm asking too.
Let's just call it a surgical. I think it's fine. Just call it a surgical. I think not all masks that are blue that have ear loops would be labeled. I don't know for sure. I tried to research this and I don't remember what I found out. But I think there are differences between masks that are, say, approved by the FDA and those that are not. And it's very confusing right now because some are coming from other countries and can't be approved. And what I'm, what my intention has always been is to avoid crappy masks that don't work. And I think the word surgical might have a meaning. I don't know. But because it means something to us, I guess we just leave it at this point. I wish we had the expertise. I don't know the answer.
I think the important thing is the part, like, at the paragraph that's above it that states that the district will supply disposable face covering for individuals who arrive without one. If there is any doubt in a teacher's mind as to the efficacy of a face mask, that it sounds like there will be a supply to provide a student with a new face mask. Am I correct, Superintendent? Oh, he's gone.
He's unmuting.
Yes, we've ordered about $130,000 worth of PPE at this point.
Right, so I feel like that's another kind of layer of safety. If anyone doubts whether a mask, a store-bought mask that is a surgical mask is appropriate, that they can always replace it with one of our masks that we know is a surgical mask.
Okay, so I think we're back to where we started. By, so we're going to leave in surgical now, it sounds like, not take out surgical from your original.
But are we adding in loop?
I don't really know. I don't, I don't see any harm if we want to do that. I think adding the word loop would be fine to be, to align it with our MOA. I think that's fine. I'm assuming the ones we ordered have loops. I hope they're not, you know, stick on your face with some kind of an adhesive. I hope there's loops. So, so I think that's fine. So are you, will you accept that as a friendly, friendly change to your previous changes?
Yes, I will. And there are three locations where that appears.
Okay. Okay, so it's been made and seconded, and I would ask.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but everybody was fine with the Unit B language. Am I correct? That amendment, no one spoke to it. Okay.
Okay, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
I, I need to just abstain. I'm not sure. Thanks.
Okay. Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narkwitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor and one abstention.
Okay, so that is adopted. Please proceed, continue. Member Fallon.
The next policy that's up for a second reading and vote is Policy I H B H E. It's a remote learning policy, essentially saying that in the event of a district-specific emergency requiring the use of remote learning, that the superintendent can declare such an emergency and shall as soon as possible obtain the approval of the school committee. And that the remote learning plan below will be applicable in cases of disease, weather emergencies, destruction, or damage to schools, rendering them inaccessible or other extraordinary circumstances, including. including emergencies declared by government officials, the school committee or the superintendent. With the pandemic, it became abundantly clear that there was no policy that sort of established the, the right of a district to say that we could switch to remote learning and now that we have the capabilities to do so, there should be a policy on hand for if we ever need to in the future, whether, you know, and when it's not a statewide emergency. And so this was a policy that was proposed by the MASC and it can call the components that should be included in a remote learning plan and what the priority should be. So I would move to approve the policy IHBHE as presented.
Is there a second? Okay, Member Seraphy Cox.
I just have a question. Does this mean that snow days will become remote learning days?
So I'll let the superintendent address that, but it's come up with the commissioner and I don't.
I'm sure it has.
So this is a discussion that we actually had with the alt team this morning. At, at a time when we are remote or even hybrid, where we're keeping substantial numbers of students out of school in order to look, learn remotely, I can't imagine why I would want to burn a snow day for that. So I'm, I'm, right now, my, my thinking is unless the commissioner comes out with a new rule, regulation or ordinance telling us that we may not use remote learning days in place of snow days, that's what I'll be doing this year.
I'm sorry, that we may not use, so you are going to use snow days?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying in the absence of a law prohibiting it, I'm going to use remote learning days instead of using snow days this year.
Okay, you, you mean, so that, what you're saying is that if we were to go back in person and there is a snow day, that then that snow day would become a remote learning day?
No, I, I said during the remote and hybrid period where we already have remote instruction going on. I'm not sure that if we're back in person, I can get everyone up and ready to do a remote learning day when I start to see the forecast change.
Okay, okay, very good. Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think with the objections to Blizzard bags, that the question came up whether we could do remote learning days and he was, the commissioner was not in favor unfortunately. Was there, were there any more questions or discussion of this policy?
Okay, I don't believe so, no hands are up. So you've made a motion, I can't recall if it's been seconded. It's been seconded by Member Seraphy Cox. So I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
And Member Condon.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, one more to go.
Yeah, it's the last one, it's also a second reading and vote. So this is a supplemental policy, it's a EBC supplemental. It is a supplement to our emergency plans policy that we just adopted. And what it does, you all, I'm sure have caught on to the fact that we have policies, for example, policy IC and policy ICA that tell us the number of days in the school year and the school calendar or policy KI about visitors in the school and policy EDA about transportation, that we've already had to essentially suspend those policies as a vote, but we haven't actually voted to change those policies. And so what this EBC supplemental is, is it's a policy, it's kind of like a pandemic emergency policy that allows us to suspend policies without having to go in and vote those changes into policy. So it just says that the school committee takes note of the COVID-19 emergency resulting disruption of the traditional school year, school day and year, growing concerns of students, families in the community and the growing number of issues that it will affect public education. Therefore, the school committee establishes an emergency interim policy to promote public safety, to maintain high and efficient levels of educational services, to ensure support for students, particularly for those at the highest risk educationally, as well as for those at social and emotional risk, to comply with the emergency orders of the governor and adhere to the guidance, to the extent possible, to the guidance of DESI and other agencies of the state and federal government. And so essentially it's talking about how the school committee will approve our final back-to-school plan, the school reopening plan that we submitted to DESI and then in collaboration with this superintendent, we, sorry to make such modifications, the school reopening plan and district policy will authorize the superintendent to suspend, revise or create protocols to facilitate the safe return to school, which includes a lot of the things that we've already talked about. So I just realized that there is something that needs to be corrected, but I would move to accept this temporary policy, policy EBC supplemental that will be filed with policy EBC until the pandemic ends as presented.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussions on this one?
Mayor, could I just move to replace anywhere that it says back to school with the word school reopening plan? I see that there's an example in the fifth paragraph, it says back to school plan and it should say school reopening plan.
Certainly, so just a correction there. Okay, any further discussion? If not, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
And Member Levy.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay. Any other issues from rules and policy, Member Fallon?
No, hopefully we will get our next meeting scheduled and resume meeting as, as we used to, so. Thank you.
Thank you for getting all these for us, the way, in sort of an unorthodox manner, but everything we seem to do during COVID-19 is unorthodox. Member Seraphy Cox.
Um, I just, I suppose my standing question of where we are at with updating the policies on the website.
Okay, I'll ask, Annie, where are we on the updating of policies on the website?
There are a few left to go. I don't have them in front of me right now, but I can share them all with you, well, at the next subcommittee meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I just remembered that we were hopeful to have those updated by the next subcommittee meeting, so I just hope that that would happen.
Well, now that we are not going to be in so many negotiating meetings, that will happen more quickly.
Very good.
Okay, so thank you very much again, Member Fallon. Next, we'll move on to item B, which is a vote on revised superintendent evaluation goals and I'll turn this over to Member Condon from the Evaluation Committee Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor. Those members who sat on this committee before January approved and were familiar with a set of evaluation goals that Dr. Provost had developed as part of his evaluation cycle. Where we are now is a very different educational landscape from where we were when he developed those goals. Those previous goals were referenced and were somewhat dependent on things that are not in place now or have been shifted. Jumps to mind, one of which related to MCAS, which we didn't do. Another was the district improvement plan, which that development has also shifted. So as a result, Dr. Provost worked with the Evaluation Subcommittee to refine those goals, to develop a new set of goals that were applicable to where we are now. And we are bringing them to you for your approval, so he can proceed forward with them, collect information and then, or supporting documentation and then share that with us as we go through his evaluation. So I'll guess make a motion to vote to approve.
Yes, if you can make that in the form of a motion, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion to vote to approve the updated or the revised superintendent evaluation goals that have been shared with you.
One second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded by Member Goldman. Are there any questions about that? Okay, hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
Member Voss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narcoits.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
And Member Kaufman.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, so those goals have been revised. Now we'll move on to item C and this is an update from Budget and Property, if there is one. Member Busansky, do you have any update from Budget and Property tonight?
My only update is that the Budget and Property Subcommittee is meeting this Thursday at 4:30 and one of the issues we'll be discussing is late start. I know pre-pandemic, we were charged with bringing something back to this committee this fall and while we got very far underway with it, even as far as our last meeting in June, I just think the Subcommittee needs to revisit that and where we want to, what the path forward is and bring it back to the full committee at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you so much for that update. So next item on the agenda will be the School Business Administrators Report, followed by the Personnel Report, Kami.
So in your packet, I put the Financial Year-to-Date Expenditure Report where we are so far. I apologize for the alignment of the report. There's an issue with the financial software on the city side, so they're taking a look at it. It's just, well, the columns aren't lining up right for whatever reason. They're checking into that, but I did check the bottom line, those numbers are correct, which was more important to me. I do not have any gifts for this evening to report to you. There are three warrant enclosures that your representatives signed in the past three cycles. So unless you have any questions about that report or anything of those, that would be my report for tonight on that item.
Okay, I don't see hands. How about Personnel Report, anything?
Sure, so Personnel Report. So currently through September, as when we sent the report out last week, we had 34 new hires, five separations and 22 transfers.
Okay, thank you very much for the two reports. Next, we move to the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Provost.
Thank you, and this evening I'm going to share with the committee and with the community my convocation talk, I think it underlines why choices right at this time. Of course, it's always important that the school committee get its choices right, but now more so than ever. So we have tried to do this once before, hopefully it will go a little bit more smoothly this time. Annie, I'll turn it over to you to start the presentation.
Okay.
As has been the case with Major League Baseball, the political nominating conventions and Saturday Night Live, we're doing things a little differently this time. So I'm coming to you virtually from an empty high school auditorium. Thank you for joining me this morning. As this time-lapse video shows, we are in the midst of a global educational crisis affecting nearly 1.6 billion learners in more than 190 countries. As UN Secretary-General Antonio Guterres put it, "We already faced a learning crisis before the pandemic. Now we face a generational catastrophe that could waste untold human potential, undermine decades of progress and exacerbate entrenched inequalities." School closures have disproportionately impacted the most vulnerable learners in our local community and around the globe. UNESCO predicts a COVID-19 increase in dropout rates impacting as many as 24 million learners. And the World Bank estimates that learning loss due to the current shutdowns may cause 25% more students to fall below a baseline level of proficiency needed to participate effectively and productively in society. As we begin a new school year, the challenge before us is nothing less.
Seems like we've lost the audio, Annie.
I think I have to remain unmuted, I'm sorry, I'll back it up a little bit. Apologies.
To fall below a baseline level of proficiency needed to participate effectively and productively in society. As we begin a new school year, the challenge before us is nothing less than a last-ditch effort to save the future. It is a desperate last-ditch stand, but it's not a hopeless one. So as we renew the struggle, let me share with you my reasons for believing that we will prove equal to the tasks that lie ahead. First, the centrality of public education to all other aspects of society has never been as obvious as it is now. Communities are realizing that the economy, recreation, social services, public health and so much else associated with the good life depends upon a strong system of public education. Education is a quintessential public good and it's been under attack for decades by those who would seek to privatize it. The pandemic reminds us that education only works when it works for all. Secondly, the pandemic has also forced us to upgrade our knowledge of instructional technologies in ways that can make learning more effective long after the present crisis passes. Just a few months ago, I cannot have imagined engaging the community through video or virtual town hall meetings, but now that has become a regular part of my practice, just as so many of you have developed new skills and techniques that can help you to connect with the digital natives in your classrooms. We have expanded our one-to-one Chromebook program to include grades K through 12. The distribution of affordable digital technologies has the potential to liberate learners from the confines of the classroom, school and schedule. But let me be explicitly clear, we do not believe teachers can or should be replaced by computers. We do not endorse the indiscriminate use of canned digital curriculums. Even when the computer is the medium of instruction, the student must remain at the center of the learning. the student must remain at the center of the learning experience, interacting with content and tasks that have been thoughtfully designed by a teacher who knows and understands their needs. Our technology team has designed five days of professional development to help you further enhance your remote teaching skills. Thirdly, even as our technological skills have grown, the pandemic has reinforced the importance of human relationships for the learning process. If anyone thought brick-and-mortar schools could eventually be replaced by instructional technology, remote learning, and artificial intelligence, they have had a rude awakening these past few months. As the UNESCO International Commission on the Future of Education put it, "Schools are also places where we can encounter others not like ourselves, others whom we learn from and with, others who expand our understanding of the global tapestry of ways of being human." We've all come to appreciate just how much the friendly bus driver, the clerk, custodian, or cafeteria worker who knows their students by names, and of course, the teachers, ESPs, and administrators who interact with their students on a daily basis contribute to our students' social development. Anyone who's participated in our emergency food distribution program or summer programming knows how much our students thirst for social contact with a trusted adult. Fourthly, this crisis has shown us how misinformation, fake news, and the denial of scientific knowledge destroys lives. There can be no more compelling argument for the importance of science education, critical thinking, and math literacy than the daily news, which has shown our late nation to be leading the world in every negative category for months. I sincerely hope this experience causes us to turn from the Twitter sphere to the laboratory in pursuit of solutions to the current crisis and the much larger problems of global climate change. Finally, the pandemic has brought us into closer collaborations than I've ever seen in the field of education. Through the use of technology, we have overcome space and time as barriers to collaboration. Moreover, the enormity of the educational problems we now face has forced us to abandon notions of rugged individualism or self-importance. We know we can't get through this alone, so we found strength in a new spirit of solidarity shared by educators everywhere. So let me return to the challenge of the current moment. Due to the statewide school shutdown, our students are already behind and at risk of falling further behind when we resume remote learning. If we are going to save the future, we'll need to begin the recovery process by catching students up academically and emotionally on a scale never seen before. And we need to begin the task while most of us are physically separated from our students. Here are a few strategies we know can help. The first is to quickly identify learners' needs through diagnostic testing. Our instructional team has put together a robust set of protocols for us to use this year. When the decision was made to start remotely, they began working on plans to conduct assessments remotely. The next step is to identify a limited number of core priorities for the upcoming year. While each of the standards listed in our newly documented curriculum should be explicitly taught and assessed, the prerequisite standards that were shared last spring can assist teachers in prioritizing key skills and knowledge to be mastered this year. Accelerating learning will require us to cover more content in less time and to do it remotely. It will require us to be very selective about what we teach. For the upcoming year, if a skill is not listed in the curriculum or targeted through diagnostic testing, we probably can't afford to teach it. This will be the most important year of our careers. Our ability to provide quality education in these extreme conditions will determine whether we have a next generation of professionals, entrepreneurs, and academics. This is literally a race to save the future.
Thank you, that's my report for this month.
Thank you very much, Dr. Provost. So now we move to Section Six and Old Business, and we have already taken up Items A and B. So we now come to Item C, which is a required certification of the Code of Conduct that was developed with our school councils. And this has been being presented tonight by Principal Shukat. Principal Shukat?
Hi, everybody. Nice to see you. So thank you for having me. Tonight, I would like to provide you with some background, the process we went through, and where we hope to go with the new Code of Conduct character and support. At the end of the 2017-2018 school year, in one of our ALT meetings, I brought up the idea that I felt it was time to develop a new Code of Conduct that aligned with our philosophy of having a unified mindset and the need to move away from punitive forms of discipline. The ALT members went enthusiastic about the idea, and Dr. Provost then asked me to lead this project. In August of 2018, a 29-member task force was created, composed of administrators, teachers, students, ESPs, support staff, caregivers, community representatives, and representatives from REAL and CPAC. The task force meant monthly for the first year. At the end of the first year, now that the skeleton work of the document was complete, we decided to extend our work by one more year in order to work on the code through an equity lens by taking a closer look at race and equity and to get input from our students and other stakeholders. During the second year, we received feedback from the school committee, as well as from student groups, including the GSA, Student Councils, SOCA, and Ask Ambassadors. They were all tasked with reviewing the document through a race and equity lens. We received their feedback and made changes where appropriate. Once those edits were complete and given our timeline to have the finished document to the school committee by the end of the summer, we then had to begin working on the formatting, inserting the photos, and having a final draft complete for the March 2020 All Schools School Council Meeting. Unfortunately, due to the closure, that meeting was put on hold. Eventually, during the summer of 2020, we held an All Schools Schools Council Meeting to review feedback from each of the school councils. We made edits based on their feedback, and there was a unanimous vote to approve the new Code of Conduct character and support. The final draft was then sent to our attorney in July, and now we are here. It is important, it is important to note that this document is just a starting point. It is meant to be a living document. We recognize that in moving forward with our implementation, each of our school councils will be charged with updating the new document each year. It is our hope that each school council continues to work with all stakeholders, including caregivers and students, always with a lens on racial equity. Each year, we should be assessing the document to ensure that it reflects where we want to be as a district. The district is committed to providing training to its employees around restorative justice and restorative practices. There are certainly pockets in each school of people who are trained or come from other districts that have used it, but there needs to be consistent training across each of our six schools. It is important to note that restorative justice is not a program. It is not responsive classroom or PBIS, but rather it is a way to help students think about why they do things and how they can think beyond their impulses. It is also an approach to looking at the racial inequities in our schools and community. And according to the National Institute of Mental Health, children's brains are still developing, and we must acknowledge that and understand that their brains are still under construction. Restorative practices refers to the specific responses, strategies, and interventions that help students to build and repair relationships. The district is already providing anti-racist and anti-bias training to its employees, including looking at our curriculum with an anti-racist and anti-bias lens, embedding the social justice standards into our state standards, and most recently has committed to one Wednesday a month being dedicated to anti-racist and anti-bias training, as well as restorative practices training to all staff. The Code of Conduct is set up in sections, as you can see on Page Nine in the Table of Contents, that explains the rights and responsibilities of all stakeholders, how to get help with a problem, the various levels of behavior concerns, violation, and responses, our policies, and a section on suspensions. Additionally, there is a technology glossary, frequently asked questions, and then an appendices section at the end. I would like to thank Dr. Provost and all of the members of the task force for their commitment to racial justice and equity. I truly appreciate the time that everyone put into creating this document, and especially would like to thank Jeremy Whalen and his team, not only for formatting the document by creating, by creating a visual that represents our students, caregivers, and faculty and staff. We know there is work ahead, and we are committed to continuing this work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Principal Shukat. And I have a hand from Member Seraphy Cox. Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to everyone who served on on the, was it a commission, a committee? Task force, thank you. For this, I know that there's a lot of hard work put into it, and I also want to thank the, the school councils for their work on it as well. There's a subheading to this same agenda item that is attributed to myself in relation to restorative justice. And in previous school committee meetings, the school committee had expressed interest in restorative justice being a more intentional part of, of the way that the North Hampton Schools approaches its, its discipline. And, and so at that time, what I heard from school committee members was that they were interested in it and wanted to see a further process, you know, further set of, of, of input, et cetera. So I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that with, with the Code of Conduct going into place, that that can be a springboard for that sort of, of, of input and process to go forward. So I, I want to hear from some of the, some of my other colleagues. And then maybe after a little bit more discussion, I do have a motion I'd like to make.
Hey, Member Levy?
I have a related question for Principal Choket, but it's not, I don't know if Member Seraphy Cox, you want that discussion? Can you hold my question, if you want the discussion now before your motion?
Uh, no, I mean. Okay.
Can I actually just ask, though, is the motion you're planning to certify the Code of Conduct, or is it something different?
It's something different.
Because we do have a, we do have a actual vote scheduled to certify the Code of Conduct, so I want to make sure, and that's actually a requirement we need to get taken care of. So I just want to make sure we take care of that before we go on to something else, but go ahead. Member Levy?
Okay, I'm guessing Member Seraphy Cox's motion is related, but so I second what Member Seraphy Cox said and echo the gratitude to the, the task force and, and all of the various members who've put an amazing amount of time and effort into this. It is no small feat, and, and it's a really comprehensive document, and I think it's got a lot of strengths to it. I, I, I want to start with a question, which is to Member Seraphy Cox's point about restorative practices, and Principal Choket, you mentioned that some training will need to be involved. Can you speak to the, the, just your understanding, what kinds of conversations you've had to, to date about the type of training, the extent of the training, and the cost of the training for restorative practices? Because my understanding is, in order for restorative practices to be implemented adequately, pretty much everybody in the district needs to undergo training pretty directly.
I lost the last little bit of what you said, but.
No, sorry, I just got a note telling me that my internet connection is unstable. Sorry. Always comes a little too late to help. So I, I don't know how much you heard, but I'm just wondering what kinds of conversations you've had about the extent, or the, the, how far the training will reach, when it might happen, who might be involved, and how much it would cost.
So as far as district-wide, I don't know if we've had a conversation around cost and who's going to do the training. I know we're committing, as I said in my opening statement, most recently committing to these one Wednesdays a month that will focus on anti-bias, anti-racist, and restorative practices training. And maybe Dr. Provost can talk more about that. I can tell you that, and I can't speak for the other schools, but within my school, one of our focuses last year was not necessarily training from somebody coming in, because we just, we didn't have the budget to support that. But teachers ran a PLC around restorative practices, and it was led by teachers, teachers who have significant training in restorative practices. So we began the process of that last year, and then, of course, we had the closure, so we didn't, you know, get to continue with what we were doing during the year around our PLC. Dr. Provost, I don't know if you can, you know, provide information district-wide?
Yeah, I, I can, I can fill in the picture a little bit, and I would say that.
Can you say what PLC is?
Professional Learning Community.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. In terms of inventorying the system, as, as Beth said, there are lots of places where much training has happened. In fact, at one point, not too long ago, I think three years ago, the middle school had a restorative practices program, which ended up unfortunately getting abandoned. So hopefully, a lot of that is refresher training for them. As, as Beth said, the commitment we've made over the course of the Wednesdays, while the time were remote, is what I see as my opportunity to provide, to provide the in-depth training across the district on this topic. So I have a conversation with CES next Monday to line up the training for the Wednesdays for as long as the district is in remote mode. And I, I'm going to ask them to focus on the restorative practices with this very intentional social justice, anti-bi, anti-bias, anti-racist lens to be the focus of the required training for all staff on the upcoming Wednesdays.
Okay. I, I guess I would hope that we, as a school committee, could get some more information about the real funding that's necessary so that we can ensure that this, this initiative is really supported by the budget, because for a restorative practices initiative to be successful, it's really got to be district, district-wide with some significant training. I also just want us to understand that there's a difference between anti-bias, anti-racist work and restorative practices. The two can go hand in hand, and one speaks to the other, but, but training our, our, our staff in restorative practices and really looking at a bar curriculum are two very separate professional development endeavors. The other thing I would really hope that our, our district would consider is significant community involvement in this process moving forward. I think REAL is an example of an entity out there that has, has significant experience and insight in restorative practices and could serve as a really valuable resource, and I would hate to see us moving forward without partnership.
I, I agree with many of the points you've made. As, as I think we've discussed in the committee many times, we have an incredible paucity of professional development time available to us. Thankfully, according to the MOA that you just ratified, one Wednesday a month for the time that we're in remote is a required training for all staff. And so my plan is to take advantage of that, to focus on this initiative right now. And so my plan is to take advantage of that to focus on this initiative right now. But I do realize that there's more to A bar training than just restorative practices. However, I think it's an opportunity we're not likely to get again soon, so I want to, I want to take advantage of that time. After I have my conversation with CES, I'll be able to report back to the committee on the cost of that. When we were negotiating, we did not, um, we didn't really go into what potential cost estimates of the training are. I've been just sort of using as a figure in my head about forty thousand dollars. But but I will, I'll be able to give you a more up to date uh, estimate once I talk to them. It will always remain an estimate to some extent because the amount of training we're able to do will depend on the amount of time that we have to remain in the remote mode.
And John, could you tell, I'm sorry, Superintendent Provost, can you tell us what CES stands for?
All right, it's a collaborative for educational services.
Are you all set, member Levy? Okay, um, okay, great. Member Gold, you have your hand up next.
Um, yeah, thanks. And again, thank you to everyone and and everyone and everyone who was a part of this process. I greatly appreciated how um, Principal Choquette shared that this was a work in progress and. A living document, I guess is how you described it, which is great. And I just want to encourage um, everyone from the school committee, but especially the public. To utilize that, the forum of the school council. As Principal Choquette shared, it's something that the school councils will be reviewing. I forgot what iteration you said, whether it was yearly or bi-yearly or monthly, you know, but it's clearly the school councils at each school have a major role in reviewing and. And discussing how to change and grow the code of conduct. And with that in mind, there obviously there's things that our district needs to do and with staffing and training. The great thing about the school councils, it brings all the constituents together. Um, and has administration and has the teachers, but it also has the parent and the public community, it has business representatives. This is in um, this work of of restorative justice, anti bias and anti racist curriculum. It's really not just the work of teachers, it's not just the work of administrators, it's the work of our whole community. And the school council is a really important asset to tap into to continue to grow this work. So I hope um, moving forward, if if people want to get involved, there's a lot of arenas, but I highly encourage you. To use that school council platform to as one of them. So thank you.
Thank you, member Gold. Member Kaufman, your hand is up next.
Thank you, uh, thank you so much, Principal Principal Choquette and all of the members of the team. I remember the last time you brought this to the school committee, we were a little off put because. It was just, it was a draft, it probably had a lot of the same content, but I remember it just looked, just didn't look. It wasn't slick, if you will, but I'm sure not only have you really made it look attractive, which is really secondary, but I I also definitely noticed a lot of. Features and a lot of input that you've heard that you were able to incorporate. So thank you so much for that. I agree, I know CES really well, I think they have some great people, I think they've done great work and I'm happy to hear that. Mr. Dr. Provost is making a commitment to meeting with them at least and hopefully that works out. I just want to offer two quick suggestions, maybe they're questions that you can answer or maybe they're just suggestions, you can leave it at that. But one is, I do think that um, as great as it looks, something like this would really benefit from a plan for how this is actually going to happen. So whether it's PD or whether it's a change of working work roles or whether it's um, an oversight committee or what have you. You know, it's, it's always so difficult to implement things like this. Certainly member Levy's role of what kind of resources you would need, the earlier you can get that to us, the more likely you'll get support. I'm telling you stuff you already know, but I just mean like, how do we get from this beautiful document that has really um, great? Thoughts and ideas behind it to actually making a difference in the schools and that's always the most challenging. So I don't know to the extent that you've thought about annual plans or work or work plans or what have you, but that would certainly be one suggestion. And the other is really to ask the, the question is how are we going to know that we're successful? Uh, in the end, in terms of changing maybe the school cultures or people's attitudes or people's behaviors and ultimately outcomes. You know, what kind of outcomes are we looking for? I think if you go through the document, you can probably very easily identify like the the hard data, the quantitative data that we'd like to see in terms of student attendance rates. Or disciplinary infractions and some impact on that, but I think we really want to see um. What's hard to measure is kind of, you know, an enhanced culture where students feel even more welcome than they are now. That staff have more effective and more positive and more worthwhile interactions with young people. The kind of things that are more qualitative. So this is a tremendous first start if we have more time for the committee to kind of look at. You know, how are we going to make this up, you know, operational, how is it going to work and also how are we going to know it makes a difference? Those I think would maximize the chances of success over the next, however long this is going to take, I'd imagine three to five years would be my guess. So again, thank you so much. This is great work and much appreciated.
Hey, um, member Seraphie Cox, your hand is up next.
Yes, thank you. Um, for one thing, I just wanted to point out to the superintendent and to the school committee and the community. That actually in the memorandum of agreement that we just passed. Wednesdays continue to have professional development and be that O day during the hybrid model as well is my understanding. So it's not just during remote that we would have the opportunity uh, for these sorts of trainings. And I see the superintendent giving me a thumbs up. So great. Uh, and and I I want to uh, credit um, NACE also for for bringing that to our our memorandum of understanding. I have definitely heard a commitment from them uh, on on this matter. So I think that as other members of the of the school committee and the public have illustrated. That this needs to be an entire district wide um, commitment. And and I think NACE's commitment to that helps um, with that goal. Um, so I I know that there needs to be a motion about the code of conduct. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, do you want me to roll my my other motion related to the restorative justice piece? Into the code of conduct or does it need to be, uh, does it need to be separate?
I think it would just be clear to just have two separate votes if that's possible.
Yep. Uh, so I'll move a a approval or ratification of the uh.
I believe the term is certification, I think.
Certification, thank you. I will move certification of the code of conduct. I see member Fallon's hand though.
Member Fallon is having us, has her hand up in the camera.
I'm sorry, I just, I I just found something in the appendix. Um, and I know our only job is actually to make sure that this aligns with our policies. Um, Superintendent, we have policy ACE referenced in the appendix and I'm sorry, I didn't catch this sooner. And I don't believe that it's referencing the most updated version of policy ACE. Do you recall um, that we needed to update that policy for OCR in March?
You're muted Superintendent.
Honestly, I don't recall, but I would trust your memory on that.
It was part, it was part of a letter from Colleen Shea. Do you, is it ringing a bell?
Uh, yes, I I know the policy you're talking about.
Yeah, and so I would just ask, I'm willing to approve this, but I would ask, I'm I'm struggling. I have the thread with her, but I can't find a vote or a date that we approved it. And so now, and the dates on it are about three days before. It's literally the day before schools closed because of the pandemic. And so I'm not sure what happened with that. But if, could we check on whether that's the most recent version and before you print it, if it's not just substitute in the most recent version to the appendix?
We certainly could do that.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
So I had made a motion, my recollection is that we had a school committee meeting the day before we closed schools. So perhaps that is the day. Um, but I made a motion, but I don't think there was a second.
So I need. So there was a second from. Member Boss, okay. So any further discussion on certification of the code of conduct? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Boss.
Yes.
Member Gold.
Yes.
Mayor Narquitz.
Yes.
Member Busansky.
Yes.
Member Fallon.
Yes.
Member Seraphie Cox.
Yes.
Member Condon.
Yes.
Member Levy.
Yes.
Member Kaufman.
Yes.
Member Goldman.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, um, so member Seraphie Cox, we did, we we had a um, we had a sub uh, bullet to this, which was the discussion of restorative justice. And it sounds like you have some form of motion you want to make, I assume relative to that.
Yes, thank you. And um, and I'm open to revisions to this motion. It has kind of uh, some different parts, but also is related to um, some ideas that have already been voiced. And also related to some ideas that member Levy had earlier. So um, this is what I had prepared, um, but in in relation to the discussion, I'm open to revision. So I would move to uh, for the school committee to instruct the superintendent to do outreach and a community visioning process. To create goals and considerations for a a restorative justice program is how I had it termed. But I'm certainly open to revision of that with guidance and input from Real and other restorative justice leaders. Potentially locally such as Palante. Um, and return at at, I was going to say uh, the summer time. Like maybe our June meeting, something like that, but I'm open to revision about the date as well. In order to give the um, the school committee a recommendation about what money should be put into our. FY, what would that be, twenty twenty-two budget? Uh, in terms of of what the program, you know, would look like. And just as potentially an aside that uh, that the family engagement coordinator, I would, I would think could play a key role in this as well. So the core bit of the of the motion, I'll just say it again, is to instruct the superintendent to do outreach. And a community envisioning process to create goals and considerations for a restorative justice program. Return at a date specific with recommendations about money for the budget. As well as uh, working with guidance and input from uh, from Real and other restorative justice leaders.
I second that.
The second um, is uh, discussion, I guess I would. Any questions, discussion? Um, member Gold and then member Levy, I've got a bunch of hands coming up, so. Member Gold.
Um, thank you. Um, member Seraphie Cox, could you describe how um, this motion? Either supports or is different than the work that is stated within the code of conduct? I mean, I think it seems, is there something that in the, that it does beyond the code of conducts commitment to? Work on including restorative justice within the North Hampton schools and what have you, you know, I mean, it's sort of. I guess I'm trying to see what's the difference between what's in the code of conducts mission and expectations for the superintendent and this.
Sure. Um, I mean, I think for one thing, it um, relates to the comments of from Real about um, having kind of not seen. The sort of outreach process that they um, had expected. Um, but I think beyond that, um, and that's just perhaps a piece of it. Beyond that is really about coming back at a date specific with uh, with a recommendation about money. And uh, and about uh, program design uh, for the school committee. So I I think that it absolutely um, supports what is currently in the code of conduct and is not meant to um. To contradict it in any way.
I appreciate it. Yeah, so I definitely that um. You went back and you said the primary part was the instructing the superintendent to um, I forgot how you phrased it, like you read the motion and then you went back and said. The primary part, it was that other part where I I really liked the idea of the, when you brought it back just now. Of the timeline and putting that in, having those expectations there. I think that's a, that's a big part of it. So I appreciate that part. I do wonder, yeah, I wonder if we need to have the beginning part of instructing the superintendent to do something if the code of conduct already does it, but. That's my only comment.
Sure, I I mean, I I would want the superintendent to oversee it, not necessarily that the superintendent has to, has to convene every single meeting himself. That that's not my intention, um, which is one reason why I just kind of thought out loud. That perhaps the family's engagement coordinator uh, could uh, could play a role, key role in this. But absolutely the return at a date certain with uh, with a plan and and recommendations for for budgetary considerations. That that was the core, the the piece uh, you know, above it is just to instruct the superintendent to have that happen. And to go through a community process to create that, not just internal communications within, say, the alt team.
Okay, um, member Levy, you have your hand up next.
Thanks. Member Seraphie Cox, can you just say more or even repeat the timeline? I just want to make sure if we're, if if this um, has a specific timeline that we're voting on? Or if it was just a suggestion and that the timeline would be solidified as a part of this process?
I would like to hear from the committee what timeline they think would be appropriate. I had in my motion stated the summer, um, perhaps the June or July, I think I said July meeting. But I, when I said that, I stated that I would be open to revision of that timeline.
Okay, and and that timeline, what what do you foresee happening by then or then?
Mm-hmm, um, I mean, so the outreach, the community visioning process that would create, help create the goals and the considerations. And then the um, the the like, design and 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 budgetary needs.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I guess um, I like the idea a lot. And I'm wondering whose input, who who else's input do we need to set that timeline outside of the school committee? Uh, probably members of the alt team or who, or I think it would be interesting to say we would like it no later than X. But to allow the folks who are working on it to really be able to articulate what they need in order to to put that together. But I otherwise very much appreciate the the idea behind um, something concrete that allows this process. Um, I think member Kaufman also mentioned this earlier of really needing and wanting to have specific goals. Action plans or roadmaps and and budgets, so appreciate the the motion.
Okay, um, member Boss, you have your hand up next.
Thanks, I won't repeat. I I really agree with what everybody said and just want to thank um, the many people who worked on the code of conduct. I didn't speak up earlier, but it's really an amazing amount of work since a year ago when we saw it, so thank you. And I also really appreciate this motion that member Seraphie Cox has put forward because it provides some structure. And helps um, make sure some of the feedback we've gotten from Real and other community members. Is put forward in a way that um, feels like it will actually move us in the direction that we're trying to move in a, in a substantial way. So thank you. One quick comment is in terms of just budgeting. Um, I'm not sure if June is that important a deadline. I I agree putting a timeline on, but budget season seems.
June is that important a deadline. I, I agree putting a timeline on, but budget season seems to be more ended December to March. And I think if we wait until next summer, which may be the realistic way of doing this properly and convening the right amount of input, I think it might be a 2023 budget, but John's nodding his head. Yeah, thanks, that's all I have to add.
Okay, um, Member Gold? Your hand is up, maybe I didn't-
Yeah, well, I did put it back up unless somebody else was before.
Oh, you've got to back up fast and you're back on the queue.
Um, I was, maybe the school committee and another folks on it can help me out, because I do, when we were talking about the, um, the SRO, there, I tried pushing and, and, and efforting us to have a community conversation, sort of like you were talking about, Seraphie Cox with the forum, I forgot the word you used. Um, and folks that were on the school committee previous, I don't know, I'm sorry if I mistakenly remembering Member Busansky saying it, but there was a, we've already, we've had a lot of these conversations before, and we've had a lot of, you know, there has been opportunities for input, things like that, but, so I guess if that, if I'm recalling it correct, how is this going to be different than potentially things that we've already done, um, that led to the Code of Conduct, and what is, um, yeah, what is the feelings for folks who have been on the school committee longer? I mean, has this actually been done before? It was, as was said during the SRO conversation, I mean, I don't want to, um, put us down a rabbit hole that we've gone through already unless, um, uh, yeah, so that's just a thought I had. A question I have for, um, anyone who can help me out with that one.
Um, does anyone want to answer that? Member Busansky, you were called out there by name, I'm not sure if you can answer it, or?
I, I don't think I can answer, because I don't remember ever saying that in our discussion, but maybe I'm, I mean, I'm forgetting something, so it's hard for me to-
My apologies if it wasn't you, Member Busansky, I don't, I just remembered there was like, I'd, I'd asked for, I'd said, you know what, like, I don't think we should vote on this now, we should have a, um, we should have a community conversation, and there was talk about how we had a community conversation in previous years that led up to it. I could be wrong, uh, it's, I've been wrong many times.
Do you have any historical, something to add to what Member Gold is asking?
Uh, no, it's for another, no, I have a-
Okay, um, all right, um, Member Condon, your hand is up next.
Thanks, uh, I just want to comment on the kind of timeline aspect of this. Uh, obviously timelines with, with clear goals are very important. Uh, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that if we really want to collect perspectives and information from, from multiple areas of the community, be mindful of how we're going to do that, and in, in the current climate, really, the only way to do that is online meetings like this, which preclude certain elements of the community from participating. Um, so I, I, I just want to say, you know, when we're thinking about those dates, whether they're June, July, consider if we believe it's realistic, we can have forums and other ways of collecting information that would be accessible to all.
Do you have thoughts on a revised timeline?
I do not. I, I just wanted to throw it out there for, to open discussion about that. Um, you know, COVID might be gone by the end of the year, and we'll be able to have forums in January and February, or it might explode again, and we won't be getting in groups before next fall, you know, I, I don't know that answer. So, but I just wanted to throw that out there, so we're thinking about how are we going to engage all of the areas of the community that we really want to engage with that is inclusive?
One, uh, thought that I have about that, of course, is that, uh, we can set a goal for the timeline and then we can revise it. Like, if the superintendent were to come to us, you know, in the spring and say, obviously I can't meet this timeline, uh, then the, the committee could have a discussion about it at that time.
Your mute, Mayor-
Member Goldman?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Member Seraphie Cox, for, um, including, bringing this up, but also for, um, having the foresight to include it on the, get it onto the actual agenda instead of just bringing a full discussion on. I really appreciate that. Um, and, uh, thinking it through ahead of time in this way. Uh, at this time, I'd really appreciate Superintendent providing some thoughts and feedbacks on this motion.
Thank you. I, I guess my hand was raised just to ask a question. So a few minutes ago, I told you you have an opportunity here to do something right now. I, I guess I'd want some direction from the committee, whether they want me to let that pass to potentially get you a plan to do something that we could begin in July of 2023.
Um, but can I clarify what you mean by that? Um, by right now, do you mean the A-Bar trainings?
Yes.
I, there's nothing in this motion that is intended to tell you not to do the A-Bar trainings, especially since they are in the memorandum of agreement that was just ratified.
So just to help me understand, if we got to a point, we could potentially have the staff trained before I provide you with the report on the timeline of what it's going to take in order to implement? Just help me understand how that, how that's going to work.
So are you saying that staff training is the only part of a plan that you would bring forward?
I guess I'm asking for clarification on what you're seeking in the plan.
Uh, I guess I'm thinking something, uh, beyond just, uh, just staff training. Um, and, I mean, perhaps other committee members can chime in as well. Staff training is absolutely a key component of it, and I'm glad that part of it is already underway.
Um, so, Member Goldman, your hand is, you still have the floor, um? Did you, or, you asked for some clarification from the superintendent, I'm just wondering if you got that, or I'm just trying to understand before I move on to anyone else?
Um, no, I think that's, I mean, those are Superintendent's thoughts and feedback, so, thank you.
Um, do other folks have, um, Member Kaufman, your hand is raised.
It is, so I, um, I may be getting a little confused now. It seems like tonight we've talked about A-Bar. I think, um, now I might be wrong, I think Member Levy was talking about, um, some evidence such as the, um, disciplinary rates and the inequities of our disciplinary rates, um, as a, as a need for A-Bar, which I fully agree with, but then there was also, um, it seems as if, Member Seraphie Cox, you can correct this for me, please, but it seems like you're trying to draw a distinction between restorative justice and A-Bar, and yet I don't get the distinction is so clear when we're also talking about one of the problems with a, uh, an curriculum and approach or other aspects of our education and delivery, um, has seemingly not resulted in, in quite the kind of level of fairness that we want either, citing disciplinary infractions, and then we just had this, um, we just had this discussion on a code of conduct that mentions restorative justice throughout. Um, I don't know, I know that members of REAL had just, you know, seemingly, um, shed their opinions that maybe the aspect or the mention of restorative justice was not genuine. But I have no reason to go with that, other than there was some opinion on that. It, it seems like the folks that worked in that committee, um, worked in that, that task force, I guess, um, put in an awful lot of hours, and I would value their judgment that if they believe that one of the real pieces, the real significant parts of that of our code of conduct and, and student, and student support is restorative justice, then I'm going to believe it, so I, it just feels like a setback. The idea of doing a community, having a community conversation, if I understand to, if I understand that correctly, seems like an incredible setback, both in terms of timing and also not really valuing the progress that we've made and that group has made, as well as the progress we've made tonight in terms of our commitments moving forward. So frankly, I'm, I'm, I think I'm pretty confused. Um, I can't vote on something I'm confused about, and I'm also afraid of asking too many questions when probably I need to talk to you individually just to get some better understanding, so that's it. I'm confused, but I, I don't like the idea of having a community conversation, if that's, if it's the way I understand it, and I also feel like we're, um, i- it feels odd to me, I feel like we're discrediting all the work that this, that this group did on the Code of Conduct, and they mentioned, uh, restorative practice, and I don't know why we're not valuing the work and the efforts they've made to put that in, because there was some mention that, um, of doubt from members of REAL earlier today. That doesn't feel right to me. People are entitled to their opinions, but um, I need to learn more about it before I could, I can go with it, so.
Sure, um, it, there were two pieces of that. One was, uh, about the difference between the, um, the A-Bar, uh, and, uh, and between, uh, restorative justice. Um, I, uh, respectfully would actually ask if perhaps Member Levy could, uh, could illustrate that better for us than, than I can.
Sure, I would think that restorative practices is one approach to achieving an anti-bias, anti-racist culture, and that when we're talking about A-Bar, we're talking about a much larger umbrella under which restorative practices would, would fall, and restorative practices would allow a way of engaging, a way of educating, a way of thinking about discipline, but also thinking about building community and thinking about community harm, and I think restorative practices by its nature can, if done appropriate, or not appropriately, but in a, in a specific way, can very much bring a lens of anti-bias, anti-racism, but it's, they're not one in the same. And you, we need both. We need both, um, some very significant training on restorative practices, and I think to Member Seraphie Cox's motion, it's, it's not just training, it's also looking more closely at our, our policies, more closely at our practices, more closely at our community building and community outreach. Um, our, you know, there are a lot of, of components to restorative practices, and there are also a lot of components to, to anti-bias, anti-racist work, which also looks at all of those things plus others, and so it's sort of, you know, they can go hand in hand, and I think very much should, and I'm really excited about that. I think, to me, for us to take an A-Bar approach to restorative practices, that means ensuring that we're, that we're, that we're bringing in the community conversation, that it's informed by issues of equity, um, and race, and so on. So I think, I don't want to go, I don't want to go on for too long, but I, I hope that helps, just in the distinction that there's, there's an umbrella, one falls under the umbrella. It's sort of, uh, you know, necessary but, but sufficient kind of a conversation, and I think the, the idea of, you know, this is why I also asked about the, the timeline, because I think, to Superintendent's point, I think I'm confused about the Wednesdays, because I know that within the memorandum of agreement, we're talking about, or NACE is talking about A-Bar training, and the superintendent is talking about restorative practices training, and again, those aren't necessarily the same thing. And so, like, can it be one Wednesday a month is restorative practices and one Wednesday a month is A-Bar? I don't know what the constraints, or the restrictions are, but I think as we're thinking about, to your point, Member Kaufman, are we taking a step backwards here? Are we slowing it down too much? I think you would likely agree that if we're going to bring in this major district-wide initiative, we should have some articulated goals about what success looks like, how will we know what we're working towards and when we've achieved it, and what the steps are that we need to do in order to get there. So I, I'm with you that I, I kind of balked at the, the notion of the summer of being the time when this plan is presented, and I still think we need a plan.
Um, so, Member Fallon, you have your hand up next.
Thanks, uh, so two things. One is, um, this conversation, I think I would, I feel like it merits being the topic of a retreat or one of our, its own separate meeting. Um, I think there's so much to think about of exactly what you just said of, you know, what is the work? How are we organizing the work? How are we prioritizing the work? Who's doing which work? Um, and how are we engaging with the community? I, I, I just feel like that's not something we're going to decide right now, and I don't want to vote on something when nobody's really clear on what it is that we're asking and who we're asking what of. Um, so I'm not comfortable with the voting portion of it, and then part two, and this is a total aside, and it's just for public record, was, um, page ninety-three of the appendix F of the Code of Conduct, uh, the policy ACE that we referenced is old, because on, I found it, March twenty-sixth, we passed a new policy, ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, um, in a, an expedited first and second reading. So that's just for the record.
Okay, um-
Because that was actually our only job, right, for the Code of Conduct discussion?
That's, thanks very much.
Member Busansky, you have your hand up next.
Thanks, I just have a point of clarification. This says, on the agenda says discussion, and now we're taking a vote? Is that allowed? I'll ask our parliamentarian.
Uh, well, that's a good point. I had asked for it to be a vote. I, um, I think because it was underneath a vote, I thought that that meant that it would be a vote, but that's not an, uh, I know that I'm parliamentarian, but I actually don't know that one.
Yeah, and again, I think we were, we were, um, uh, putting it under, um, I, I think we were wrapping it up there to put it, you wanted to be in close proximity to the, to the Code of Conduct, but I, I guess I wasn't clear about that. I mean, you, you've had a discussion, you're making a motion, um, I mean, I, I mean, again, yeah, it's a close call, I guess, it's a close call. I don't know that people, people were expecting to have a discussion about Code of Conduct and the certification, which was sort of a distinct thing, and then there was this restorative justice piece, I'm not really, I didn't, I guess I didn't know for sure, I got to go back and look, it's a blur, whether there was actually a separate vote you were proposing, but, or whether it was to be wrapped together, so.
Right, I, I had viewed it as a, as a continuation of the discussion that we had at a meeting, I want to say in June, um, that was subsequent to the SRO discussion.
Yes, then we repurposed it once that was behind us or reworded it or something. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure. Member Kaufman, do you? I don't remember how we got to where we were on this, but.
Yeah, it was just in the interest of not having a discussion after a discussion.
Okay, um, so again, um, you're making, you know, uh, you're making a motion, um, I don't know that it's, it's coming out of a discussion, I, I don't, I, I don't see, um, it's not a funding thing, it's not a, I, yeah, I, I don't really have a strong feeling one way or the other about it. Um, obviously, it's always nice to signal that we're going to be taking votes on things, but this was something we, wasn't really, you were, it wasn't like there was, like, the Code of Conduct was a distinct thing that was, you know, um, a document that had been presented, and we were voting on it. Um, this is more of something coming out of a discussion, and you're asking the school committee to, to come up with some kind of a format for reaching some decision in the future, so yeah, I don't have a strong feeling about it one way or the other. Do you, do you feel that it's urgent that we do it tonight, or could it be at the next meeting if we wanted to actually put a vote? It also sounds like there's, people have a lot of questions about what it is they're being asked to vote on. Um, and so that's my response to that. Uh, Member Busansky, which I know is not very helpful.
Thank you.
Member Goldman, did you have a question, or, uh, maybe somebody to clarify, or?
Yes, um, I will just, um, say that I would also appreciate more information or, um, information ahead of the meeting for topics to vote on. I wasn't expecting to vote on this. Um, and I also just wanted to open the floor, if it's permitted, to Principal Chuket to respond with, uh, her thoughts and feedback on the motion, on the proposal.
So, one thing I wanted to say, but I, I didn't raise my hand, because I didn't know if I could, um, was I think there's a perception out there that REAL and, um, maybe the task force are in disagreement, and as I, I stated in my opening, is the task for, we've had lots of discussions- is the task for we've had lots of discussions about this, and we understand that this is a starting point. And we wholeheartedly agree that the district needs to provide training and restorative justice, restorative practices and anti-racist and anti-bias training. We know that this document mentions all those things, but we do need to have consistent training, and that's why this is a starting point. And we're charging our school councils to move forward with kind of these assessing the document, assessing some of the things that you're talking about, like looking at our discipline data, you know, and how do we know that we're making progress or or this implementation is working? And so there is an understanding that we do need more training as a district around these things. So it sounds like it seems like there's this perception that REAL and the task force are in disagreement about this, and it's it's really not. And I tried to portray that in my opening that this is a starting point and we do feel like we need training. We can't continue to do pockets of training in each school, not now that we all have the same Code of Conduct. Before, we were working on all separate Code of Conducts with an elementary school, one, a middle school, one, and a high school one. And we're trying to approach our Code of Conduct with this unified mindset and with understanding that we have kids, we're feeding to the middle school and the middle school is feeding to the high school. And it's really important that the training is consistent with all of us. And so I just don't want people to think that somehow there's some disagreement between REAL and the task force, because we do want support in doing this.
Member Voss, you have your hand up next. First of all, I just want to make sure. Member Goldman, was that you 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 had the floor? I just want to make sure you're done.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Yes, thank you so much. And one comment is, Mayor, can you just confirm that guests to our meetings who are on the agenda can be a part of discussions about the topics they're presenting on?
Typically, I mean, this was a, you know, this, we we already moved on from the Code of Conduct technically, although again, this was a bullet point under Code of Conduct, but generally I I think it's completely appropriate if, you know, the person who presented something, there's a question about it for them to respond to it. I don't think there's anything out of the ordinary about that. If we were at our actual meeting, you know, a principal show cat would probably be standing at the podium or sitting right near the podium. So it'd be perfectly natural for us to ask a question of them. So, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to have that be clear. Thank you so much.
Okay, Member Voss.
Thanks. I'm gonna make a suggestion and a comment. My suggestion is that I would like us to consider voting on this motion at the next meeting and have a clear vote, and that gives us some time to think about it. But my comment is I really don't see this motion to be in conflict at all with the Code of Conflict and all the things we've heard. And in fact, what Principal Shuket just said, I feel is very consistent with this motion. So from my perspective, this motion is saying this is such an important thing. Let's figure out how to do exactly what what Principal Shuket just said, have a way to have ongoing conversations, because that's what it's going to require. And it's not just a school council, it's across all school councils and across so many people to make this really work. And on top of that, we need funding for it, and we don't know what that funding is or where it's coming from. So I actually, I, from where I'm sitting, Member Seraphy Cox's motion is super important to move this forward. And maybe we just need to think about it more, but that I'm not seeing it at all in conflict. I I'm seeing it as us saying, this is so important. We need to support it. And she's providing a structure. And I also heard her say when she stated it, and maybe we can just have it emailed out to us, that she welcomes modifications. It's just a starting point for discussion, the way it was worded, which is another reason why I think it's really worth sending out the wording and then maybe coming back at the next meeting. But for me, this is a way to support the the really important work that we have to do. And Dr. Provost, I do really appreciate all the professional development we have planned, but you know, it they're not, we're not gonna all be trained before next year, right? Like, this is an ongoing conversation that's probably gonna be ongoing for our lifetimes, really, you know, to to figure out how to make these processes better. So so I so, yeah, I'll I'll stop. I just think it's very consistent with what we heard in the actual Code of Conduct and from the the people who designed the Code of Conduct and what the future needs are. And I'm appreciative of the thinking ahead for that.
Before I come to you, Member Seraphy Cox, Dr. Provost, you raised your hand. Was that in response to Member Voss or you just wanted?
So so there are many comments made tonight that I agree completely with. What I was asking for clarification was should I essentially just shelve the Code of Conduct that was just approved? And then come back in with a plan in the summer that could be started implemented in the next budget year, which would be July of twenty twenty three? Or would you like me to to move forward with this and begin doing whatever work I can to start implementing it at this time? That that was essentially the question.
And and just since I made that comment, I my personal feeling is you should absolutely go ahead and these things should be in parallel and we should be doing everything we can to move it forward and to keep the conversation going. So thank you. I I really do appreciate your commitment to it. And I think we need to budget money for it, too.
Thank you.
Member Seraphy Cox.
Yeah. I I really appreciate the discussion tonight, and I would like to withdraw my motion with the caveat that it be that it come up at the next meeting. I would like to have members submit thoughts to the superintendent about, you know, their positions on the 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 makeup of the motion, I guess, is what I would ask. And and I will write up the the motion and and send it to the superintendent so that it can be included in the packet for the next meeting as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Member Seraphy Cox. So that motion is withdrawn. And obviously Superintendent will be receiving future motion and we'll get it on the agenda. And if you have thoughts you want to share through the superintendent, you can do that. And and we'll take it up at the next meeting. So the next item on the agenda was proposed to be item D, which was a vote on a memorandum of understanding with the YMCA, but we've been notified this afternoon that the YMCA has withdrawn that, so we'll not take that up this evening. Next item on the agenda under old business is item E, which is the October twenty second, twenty twenty School Committee Meeting. And this is one of those quarterly off meetings that we want to be plentiful for. And so the vice chair, who's leading that planning, this is his item. I think he's seeking some some input and feedback from you all. So I'll turn it over to the vice chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item actually has gone this, the name of this item has gone through different iterations. So.
To interrupt you, there are some hands up before we get to this. Is it okay to to go back to the piece that just got skipped over?
Sure, yes. I'm sorry. Once the once the motion was withdrawn, I was moving on to the next item. So it was no longer on the floor. So Member Levy.
Thanks again, Member Kaufman. I'm sorry to have interrupted you. I just want to take the opportunity to to express my extreme disappointment that the that we're at the point where the Y has withdrawn their 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 proposal. I think that we as a district have so much work to do to support our working families through remote learning and through hybrid learning. And I think I'm just really, really disappointed that we're at the point where we are not. We don't have anything on the table right now in terms of options, as far as I know, to support those families who aren't able to to physically be with their students while their students are going through remote learning. I think for me, as I was thinking about supporting remote learning, it was with the idea in mind that we as a district would be working to find solutions for those working families. And we've talked about the Y as a as an option, and I was excited about that. We've talked about the potential for different schools to connect families. I know that's happening at some schools like Bridge Street, but it's not happening at all schools. There are a number of working families that have zero opportunities right now or options. And I think we are doing a disservice to our families. And my I would want to express the sincere hope that we can put our heads together to come up with an option to support those families who who aren't able to support their students through remote learning.
Hey, Member Buszansky.
All right. Well, I will just, yeah, I will just echo what Member Levy said. So in full agreement and and she said it very well. I also had wanted to make another point, which was, I hope, as is our typical practice, that we have when we have invited guests, that we have, we move their agenda item up earlier and I I feel like it's ten fifteen and we had Grow Food Northampton here till very late Thursday night. They didn't make it all the way till twelve thirty. That's true, but they stayed on for a very long time to present. So I just would hope that somehow maybe after Member Kaufman, after this next issue, we could just bump them up even a little bit to get them on sooner rather than later and not assuming that Elisa Klein is still here, that we haven't lost them already.
Okay, certainly. I'm I'm trying as chair to balance many things and I there are people that got you know, triple bounced already that I moved forward because they've been bounced at three previous meetings. So I'm trying to juggle a lot of those things. So we'll try to we'll try to move them up as soon as we finish this. Member Gold.
Thanks.
Just want to be careful that we don't start that we just I'm I'm fine with people making some statements, but I also don't want to deliberate on something that's no longer on the agenda. But go ahead, Member.
I'm not trying to, I was just trying to scroll through emails because that was honestly, it was news to me right when you announced it that we were not going to, you know, I don't know how many emails I must have missed it in one. Is there, is it publicly shareable? Why the why pulled out of the both the why this was withdrawn? I mean, this took up, you know, we know there was a lot of conversation. The public shared a lot of information with us on this issue and to just end it without knowing, I don't know, I would, if it's if it's shareable, I'd love to know what happened with it.
I'll defer to the superintendent on this. I I don't, the communication was with him, I believe, but I'll I'd have to defer to the superintendent on this.
I guess I'll just say that the Y felt like they were potentially in a position between the teachers' union and the school committee, and that felt very uncomfortable for them. And so in order to no longer be caught in that vice, they decided it would be best for them to withdraw.
Thank thanks for that.
Okay, so Member Kaufman, I think we're back to you again. And actually, Member Kaufman, I wondered if you, because you haven't actually started, would you yield to my moving up the Grow Food Northampton folk? It's ten fifteen and we could just take them now?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
So why don't we move to section seven, number B, and this is a requested vote to approve some modifications to the NPS Grow Food Northampton. I believe that must be a MOA or MOU to provide outdoor education to students during remote learning. And so is this something, Member Buszansky, that you were going to speak to initially or?
I think I I think Elisa Klein is here from Gray Food Northampton.
Lisa, hey, Lisa. Okay, so we'll turn it over to Elisa Klein from Grow Food Northampton.
Thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate how hard you've been working. I was on the call last week until midnight and I just I can't even believe how hard you're working. So thank you very much. And thanks for having us. I am just here to kind of introduce this topic and my colleague from Grow Food Northampton that oversees our educational programming is here. That's Eleanor Baum. She's muted right now, but I see her on the screen. So this isn't exactly a proposal per se. We're using kind of language a little bit loose and fast. We were actually asked, we were approached by Superintendent Provost and asked to provide some kind of programming on school grounds in order to facilitate kids being able to essentially get to programming outside of their homes, but that they could get to in at their school. We actually have quite a few questions about our ability to do that. And if it's the best way that we can offer something to the schools during this time, I'm gonna hand it over actually to Eleanor and hopefully we can have a little bit of a discussion with you. And I'm just wondering if school committee members actually got to see the proposal itself that includes all of the questions? Was that part of your agenda? Did you see the actual? Okay, so those are really the, that's what we're semi-proposing, and that includes the questions that we'd like to go over with you. And I'm gonna hand it over to Eleanor to speak more specifically.
Hi, everyone. Thank you very much for having us and for moving up the agenda item. I, yes, so as Elisa said, so we the the topic in question is whether to host to offer programming on school property but not inside school buildings. So sort of like field trip style lessons, but in a in a physically distanced way on school grounds. But I think that once we started exploring this option a little further, we came up with these questions. And so yeah, we're interested in knowing, having some feedback from you about what you think and having a conversation about it. So while it is, so we were approached by about this idea because it because it seemed easier for some students to get to their schools rather than get to our farm, which is on Meadow Street in Florence. That's where our field trips normally are. And and so it's true that some students would be able to get there easier, but not all students live within walking distance. So that sort of element of inequity in the transportation seemed a little bit off since the reason behind having it at the schools was to address that issue. And also, it's sort of at odds with like what I think our biggest value is with the Grow Food Northampton programming is that we bring the students to our firm site and they have this ongoing relationship throughout the years of visiting it. And, yeah, I'm not sure whether the best way would be for me to read through some of these questions, but maybe you all have seen it. But so that's one question about transportation. Also wondering how to actually successfully limit the amount of students to maintain proper guidelines. I mean, yeah, pandemic safety guidelines and then and then whether and then whether students after full days of remote learning would actually, their families would be able to bring them or they would be able to walk or have if that would be in their interest to attend to come to school when they wouldn't be coming to school otherwise. And then also the just sort of the nature of how physically distanced outdoor learning has a limit to the season because I'd say that we have probably until the end of October is normally when we host field trips and I mean, I'm all about doing winter programming, but I don't I don't know if that's going to be part of this. That's not part of this picture. And so I'm, our education team is wondering whether it makes more sense to devote our our time to to other remote resources that are valuable in outdoor and indoor conditions, like like take home kits and different kinds of yeah, we're just investigating these other things that can be in collaboration with teachers. Yeah, I know there's more questions here, too, but I've spoken a lot. So and well, I guess, oh, the this last point, number six, is that it's it's different. It's not related to is that because we are trying to create our accessible programs, we are actually also in conversation about creating and leading some socially distant and no cost activities at the subsidized housing neighborhoods. And that would not be in conjunction with the school system. And that would not be in conjunction with the school system. But, um, yeah, might address some of the, um, some of the points that we were hoping to by having it on school grounds. So let's just, uh, to hold that also in the picture. And we're not sure, we're in the process of figuring out whether in terms of liability, we would be able to lead programs off our farm, but under our auspices, um, and not the schools.
Thank you, Elena. Um, I wonder if, um, I saw superintendent provost had his hand up and I just wonder, member Condon, if you would defer to superintendent provost, because I just feel like he initiated this conversation and so it might be helpful for him to give some response here or framing or some guidance to the school committee.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I would, I'd like to, to do all of that and also do a little clarification on the history of this, this. Um, initially, Michael had, Michael Skilicorn had approached me about the very topic that's listed in this item, which is, um, the possibility of doing field trips to the farm while we're in remote. Um, and that, that actually leads to all the rest of your questions. Um, so my response to him was that it's really difficult for us to contemplate any kind of field trips during uh, remote learning for several reasons. One is that in a typical field trip, we're taking students from a school to a location and our students won't be there. We would be picking them up at their homes and bringing them to the farm. Uh, another, uh, another limitation is that right now we've, um, reduced all of our transportation contracts because we're in remote learning. So we don't have the buses that we normally have available in order to do that, even if we said we would just transport students from their homes. And so then we began brainstorming about how we could provide some type of programming, really with an equity lens. Um, and I, I, I brought up the idea of distributing programming throughout the city so that students from different neighborhoods could, could walk because even if we say, well, parents could transport themselves, you know that all parents don't have equal access to transportation. So that's how we got to the idea of possibly doing programming in the school gardens. Um, and your, your final idea, number six, which I didn't see until I had read this, this, um, list of questions about doing programming in, um, different locations, um, different public housing locations around the city would also accomplish the same goal of trying to distribute programming so that it's more equitably accessible to students. So, um, really the, the essence of our, our conundrum was since it's unlikely that we're able to, to, uh, find a way to assist you with transporting kids to the farm, could we take the programming into neighborhoods so that it could be accessible to students? So, um, I just wanted to sort of put that, that frame around it. Um, and I think it, it really touches on all of the questions that you've asked in this, in this list here.
Member Condon, you had your hand up, I'll recognize you again.
Uh, Dr. Provost really just touched on the two points that I was going to comment on, uh, with his frame. Uh, I really like Elena, uh, number four of your thoughts behind that. Keeping in mind all the logistical hurdles that you mentioned and Dr. Provost highlighted, uh, about developing, uh, materials and curriculum that could go out to families that could be used year round. I think that is something that, you know, could long term, could continue to be used even in non-COVID times. Um, and then the possibility of number six, if that is feasible for you and your resources and liability. I think, you know, that as Dr. Provost commented, really touches on the equity issues, which we, I think as a, a committee circle around pretty regularly in our discussions. So the, that's just one I wanted to mention.
Okay, um, um, Elisa. I was gonna, I'm sorry, I had to catch myself there.
Uh, um, I wanted to just provide kind of a, a point of clarification, which is, you know, what we're talking about essentially is programming for the schools, yet the way that I understood it from, uh, Michael, our associate director, who had these conversations with the superintendent, um, he wasn't able to be here because his wife just had their first child, uh, ten days ago. So that's why Ellen and I, Ella, Elena and I are pitching in. So we're, we're essentially kind of being asked to do programming, but completely disconnected from the school, other than the idea of doing it on school grounds after school hours. So there's this kind of funny relationship that we're being asked to, um, to create here. Usually, as I think everybody knows, we're doing in-school, in-classroom programming. Um, and we have an MOU with the schools. What we would be doing if we come to schools after remote learning day ends is doing our own programming that happens to be on school grounds. So essentially, all we would be doing is asking for permission, as it were, from the school committee to, um, do this on school grounds. We're, I guess we're a little bit uneasy about that configuration and thinking that it really might make more sense for us to be supplying, um, materials that can be used during the school day and be integrated into remote learning curriculum. So we're wondering if that, if that's a possibility, if that makes more sense.
Any feedback, member Fallon?
Thanks. I actually, I love that idea. I think that if we were, if you were to distribute materials to do some of these projects and have the space and the day to do, um, a demonstration, you know, to show them, and even if it were available for, um, during an asynchronous learning time, where they could log in and see like, okay, this is what I'm supposed to do with this seed growing kit. And this is, you know, to see a demonstration of this is how one would plant it or this is an at-home activity that one could do or tie it into the curriculum somehow. Um, I think that that would be, um, a great resource, um, for, for the schools and for the community. Um, I wish that we could, um, that we did have buses available. I'd love to get the kids outside in a socially distant way, but I, I don't know that it's realistic.
Member Gold.
Um, thanks so much, um, and just catching up and, so I appreciate your presentation, trying to hear all this. Uh, for what it's worth, just to throw it out there, I think that, um, these efforts, while maybe quite challenging during remote learning, hopefully if we do get to go to a hybrid model, um, I think this could really complement, uh, what the schools can offer in the hybrid model, because then we would be having kids on site potentially and things like that. So having a partnership in this, you know, I, I see it can, it, the trick, when we get to hybrid, hopefully it'll, it'll be a great asset to have this in place. And maybe like developing it with that mindset also could be helpful.
Superintendent Provost.
Um, as I think the committee knows, I, I look for toofers. And so I was hoping that this, um, this brainstorm we were having might also serve the purpose of another goal of the school committee, which is trying to give students who are isolated due to remote learning opportunities to gather, um, outdoors. I know that's something we've talked about for a long time and haven't really found a good solution to. However, having said that, um, if, if Grow Food Northampton is feeling more comfortable going the route of materials and if there's any, um, any type of instruction that could go with the materials, either asynchronous or, or otherwise, just so that students know what they're supposed to do with whatever comes in the bag. Um, that would be a really good activity for us to focus on on Wednesdays, um, because Wednesday is an O-day for us. And one of the types of learning activities in our reopening plan are learning activities led by individuals other than teachers. So that might be a time to target if, um, Grow Food is thinking that maybe providing, uh, materials is the way to go this, at this point in time.
Member Buscanski.
Thanks. I, I guess, uh, well, I just, I, I mean, I feel at the end of the day, it's, it's kind of a decision that Grow Food Northampton needs to make of what they feel obviously is most, most comfortable doing or most effective. Um, I mean, I agree with Dr. Provost and I've, um, and I think you know that I really do feel like it's important to get kids outdoors in person during this time. And that is something that we are with, uh, in a safe socially distant way. And I feel like we do have this window till the end of October. So I wonder if it's really is sort of an either or, is it? Uh, to me, the winter time, when maybe you would normally be in the schools doing cooking classes, is the time where we could do, uh, you know, you could provide materials and there could be some hands-on activity at home or some video go with it. But I understand that there's prep for that, so maybe it doesn't all fit together. But I just feel like we have this kind of opportunity till the end of October, which unfortunately will be before we get our kids back in person to try to, uh, in a hybrid model, right? Because that, that won't happen, the soonest that will happen is sometime in November. Um, so I just, you know, we have these gardens at all four elementary schools, we have Crimson and Clover. Like you said, there's the housing, the neighborhood housing projects. There seems like there's a lot of sort of locations that, um, if something was possible and if it was offered in enough locations, everyone would pro, have a chance, pretty much everyone lives in proximity to one of those, one, two, three, you know, four, eight, you know, nine different locations we're talking about across Northampton. So, uh, that's what I would, um, really support. I think that's what our kids are really lacking in this whole, um, remote learning plan. Thanks.
Elisa.
Um, I completely agree with what you're saying, member Buscanski. Um, and if there were an opportunity to integrate the programming that Grow Food Northampton has delivered in classroom, um, during, at schools, but during, uh, the school day, that would make sense to me. I guess, uh, we, we've had a lot of conversation about this internally and we're just not convinced that, um, there would be enough interest. You know, it's not officially part of school, it's after school. Um, would parents be inclined to send their kids to school at, uh, whatever time they wrap up remote learning to do something with Grow Food Northampton? Would kids be interested in doing that? Do you have a sense? Because it will take a lot of energy for us to, you know, move our things, um, from school to school to, uh, prepare the outdoor lessons. And we want to make sure that there will be some return on the efforts that we are investing um, for a, a pretty short window. I mean, we're probably talking about five weeks before we won't be able to continue uh, outdoor programming. So I, I am really curious to hear your, um, informed sense of whether or not there would be interest on the part of families.
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I don't, I mean, I don't have an answer for you. I don't know, it would be really, um, I, I don't know if, I, maybe other, um, school committee members have some sense of it. I think it'd be interesting to see if the PTOs might be able to help like gauge some interest. They're all starting up, they're all having meetings. I don't know if that's a good idea or, you know, especially in the elementary schools or through their, you know, weekly newsletters, you could maybe quickly gauge some interest. But, um, I understand your, I understand the dilemma. I don't have a great answer, or through the teachers, through the garden coordinators in each school, maybe reaching out to each of them and seeing if they, I know each elementary school has a garden coordinator, maybe they have some, could get, could gather some quick insight if they think teachers would be interested in kind of, uh, encouraging their students to, um, you know, go to one of these or something. I don't know, those are my thoughts. Sorry, I don't have a more specific answer.
Member Boss.
Thanks, and thanks for waiting so long for us, um, throughout two evenings. I'm sitting here without a great solution and just appreciating how you presented it. Um, all three of you, the Grow Food Northampton folks and Dr. Provost and the trade-offs and just a couple thoughts I have, and again, I don't think I have solutions. I really appreciate wanting to bring it to the schools because it enables more people to walk and be closer. And I really appreciate this issue of trying to be equitable and give everybody access. And I guess I'll just also put out there, I also am hearing you that you can do better programming at your farm because that's what you're used to and that's where everything is. So a piece of me wonders if you could do a better job there and, um, it's obviously going to be a better experience for those who can get there and better kind of work for you. Maybe considering seeing what kind of turnout you would get if you did something at your farm, even though it, I, it wouldn't cover as much geographic area. But if you live in that part of town, maybe this is something you can access. And if you live in a different part of town, maybe there's other things you can access. And, and that's not a good answer. I'm just putting it out there as a way to think about it. And the other brainstorm I have is, and the school committee really isn't in charge of curriculum and making matches with specific teachers. But certainly Dr. Provost could potentially help with that, is wondering if there's just maybe a grade. And I do think to the elementary schools because of the O-day and how challenging it can be to do remote learning on a computer for younger kids. But maybe there's a place in our school system that could really benefit from a more formal relationship with you all in the remote learning and, and not trying to serve all twelve, thirteen grades across all six schools, but just picking a small pocket where we need more hands-on stuff with kids and seeing if something could be explored there. So that, those are my thoughts after listening to this.
Your hand is back up, okay, sorry, I'm sorry, I thought it was back up. Um, superintendent Provost, I just wondered, could you, could we sort of circle back around to you? And you've heard the discussion and you've heard some of the questions, suggestions, I guess, I just wanted to see your, what your takeaways are from what you've heard.
Well, I, I think one of the things I'm taking away from this conversation is that Grow Food would want to know more about the interest in any type of programming that could take place. Since we've identified three locations, three potential locations, maybe the best way to do that would be a survey that, um, involves programming at the farm, potential programming at the schools and potential programming at these other locations throughout the city. And just see, um, what, what the, the potential response rate would be like. If that's something that you're interested in putting together, we could put that out in the elementary newsletters and then that could be some more information for decision-making. Um, and I could continue to work with you offline. I think what I'm getting as a sense of the committee is they are, um, they are, I think giving me permission to partner with you in whatever way makes the most sense for your organization and for our kids.
Superintendent, there was, um, was there some discussion with Michael about the need to have the school committee approve the use of school grounds or did I misunderstand that?
No, so we talked about that. I just wanted to make sure that the school committee was, um, comfortable. There was another item on the agenda that we just, um, you may have heard reference to that involved the use of school grounds. Um, earlier in the, I, in the evening, that was a little bit more controversial. So I wanted to make sure that, um, the school committee was comfortable with use outside of the building as opposed to use inside the building.
Would you also, as one of the three, you've mentioned three survey items, superintendent, would you all, would, would um, take home be one of, take home materials or, or at-home materials be one of the things you may also want to survey? Because it may be, that may be more optimal for parents as well, just an option to survey.
Yep.
Member Kaufman.
Just a real quick, Elisa, and hello. How, how young, how young, um, how young students do you think would benefit from, from your vast array of activities and curriculum?
Well, well, I mean, I think that we work with K through, well, currently we mostly work with K through three and K through five. But, um, but yeah, I mean, I think that we've also have surveyed some teachers mostly and we, there is a, they're very receptive to take home, um, activities and they really want kids to work with. And we just haven't gotten to parents so much. And we just haven't gotten to parents so much.
Have you worked with pre-K as well, preschool?
No, just because that's just not where our programming has been, but.
Would, would you? I mean, would that be successful at all if then would you, do you think there'd be an opportunity there or it's too early?
Oh, sure. I mean, I think that like if we made a recipe kit and preschooler wanted to use it, they, they could use it.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of the, it's one of the uh programs that we're starting that's actually gonna be more in-person. So I'm just looking for avenues, but I guess, Dr. Provost, it would make sense to me if, if it's possible. You know, so many, I, I would imagine your principals know which teachers would be really um able to jump on this really quickly. And maybe like to Dr. Voss's point, maybe it's, we just have to take advantage of the short period of time that's left. And maybe there are some teachers that are really gung-ho and could, could jump on this and take advantage of what's out there. Um, and so just so that some students get to participate and just start small, but think big given the, where we are now. So I guess I'm asking, Dr. Provost, do you, do you think that is worthwhile to ask principals to identify some teachers? And then maybe uh see if there's some quick hits that way?
I think it would actually make more sense to reach directly out to the teachers. If there's some type of communication that you could help me craft, I could send it out to the elementary staff and we could, we could see what the response from them is.
Sure. I know you're not asking me, right?
I'm looking, I'm looking at Lisa right now.
Yes, we can do that. And also um, I, we have, we have been in correspondence with like the garden coordinators and different teachers that are the main representatives from each school. And I think the main hurdle is that they're, they're excited about the programs and also like would not be able to participate in any physical in-person setting. And I think that that's like complicated drawback that they are confused about. So the key teachers that I have, have talked to um to be exploring these options. Yeah, they're excited about things that, that they can't be involved, so I think.
Yep.
Okay, um, so obviously I wanna thank our guests from Grow Food Northampton. Has this been helpful to you? Has it provided you some of the feedback to the questions you had? And, and you can carry on this conversation with, more with Dr. Provost and he's gonna try to do some survey work. And um hopefully we can find some way to, to um, you know, collaborate more on this. And, and if need be, expand the, or update the MOU if needed. So is this okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Thank you, thank you for joining us. And again, apologies for the last meeting on Thursday and, and leaving you hanging there. So thank you, thanks for sticking with us. Okay, um, so now um, we have um, the uh, back to Member Kaufman, um, who was discussing the October twenty-second, twenty-twenty school committee meeting and what uh might be planned for that meeting uh for the school committee.
Yes, thank you. And I'm gonna make this quick. Again, this is not really solely about the October meeting nor the September meeting. But um what I'd like to do is um, and let me spend two minutes just bringing the um newer members up to speed as to what these quarterly student success meetings are, how they came about. And then I'll just pose an idea about how we can move forward. So um, I went back and looked at the notes here. So back in, two years ago in September uh two thousand eighteen, I brought an idea to the school committee's attention at that, at that point, which was to add a new subcommittee named the Subcommittee on Student Success. And that was defined as a subcommittee which would meet periodically uh to review and discuss data and supporting materials related to student academic achievement, student engagement and other measures of student success in support of high-quality teaching and learning and positive outcomes for all students. And there were some examples I spoke about, like annually meeting with the superintendent to support the, the delivery of achievement results to the community. Kind of what the budget and property subcommittee does in the first look at the uh budget or reviewing and pinpointing key findings from internal and external studies. Um, but from what I recall, the, the concept of taking a closer look at the vast amount of data that's available to us was very well received. But the majority of school committee members thought it would be more beneficial to have in the entire committee look at and discuss these data rather than just having a subcommittee. So in turn, we decided, um, I believe unanimously, to develop this new series of what we call quarterly school committee meetings focused exclusively on topics of student success. So the way this has gone over the last couple of years is that we've typically met in September first um with that topic being to review and improve, and approve uh the school, the six different school improvement plans. Then we would meet in October to review and discuss MCAS scores. Um, we'd have a wintertime meeting to look at, or maybe it was an early spring meeting to look at non-academic indicators of success. And that with things such as uh attendance rates, disciplinary data, graduation rates and other parts of the state's uh school and district accountability system. And then there was another meeting and uh, Dr. Provost, I don't remember what that was offhand, do you?
Oh, I kind of think you have them all and the list you just gave.
Maybe the last one was so big, it was actually two different meetings. So anyway, this year due to COVID, we really can't proceed in the way we had done things previously. And you know, maybe this is an opportunity to open doors to think about what topics we now wanna discuss and when. So our dilemma is that our first meeting is September twenty-fourth. But the school improvement plans won't be done by then. The second dilemma, or the second scenario we're dealing with is our second meeting is scheduled for October twenty-second. That typically has been MCAS data, but the uh, the state didn't administer MCAS last year, so there's no MCAS data. And then we also have two more scheduled, I think, in the winter and spring. But to be honest with you, they're not on my calendar, so I'm not sure if we even have scheduled this yet or is just my um mistake. But I just wanted to let the newer people know that these were specifically scheduled to kind of really hone in on the success of our students. Not necessarily solely looking at data like the school improvement plans, but they were really a focus on are we doing as well as we can do? What are our successes? What are our challenges? And certainly thinking about and brainstorming ways to do better. So rather than taking a lot of time tonight to discuss what are we gonna do, given this, I wanted to um pose, propose that to, a couple of ideas. One would be that we cancel the meeting now scheduled for nine twenty-four for September twenty-fourth, which I think was gonna be about school improvement plans. And we moved that topic of approving school improvement plans to October twenty-second, which was the meeting we talked about data. Um, and that would necessitate your confidence, Dr. Provost, that you think that the schools would have their SIPs done by then?
Yeah, I think that'll work fine. It's just with everything that we've had trying to start school with a late start. We really haven't had the opportunity to gather with the schools, um, the school councils as needed to update the school improvement plans. But I think now that we're starting, it's another six weeks out, we will definitely be able to meet that deadline.
Okay, and it is a requirement, um, as I think everybody knows, for the school committees to approve the plans. And we used to do it as part of a regular meeting when it was rushed. This allows the, the teams that have worked hard on this to develop uh these plans or at least to, to share their plans with us in more, with more time and for us to ask a lot of back and forths. So if we do that, I'm not even sure we need to vote on that or maybe just get a sense if anybody objects. But I also wanted to throw out the idea that at a later meeting, we can decide on topics um that would take place in maybe our winter and spring student success meetings. Or if you prefer, I can take responsibility for coordinating an online process where I would maybe collect ideas from various members and then put together a doodle poll or something else more electronically to assess um topics of interest. So I guess I just wanna quickly see if there's any, anybody who objects, I guess, to canceling the twenty-fourth and moving the school improvement plans to October twenty-second?
Uh, Member Gold, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to check, Member Kaufman, cause there was some conversation back in July. No, we didn't pass the um, that when during the MCAS discussion and, and the bill for the moratorium. There was uh some interest from the school committee on learning more about MCAS and the state accountability system. And so there was a suggestion to use that October MCAS one since there would be data for an actual, let's understand what MCAS means and this, so I don't know. I, whether it's in October, I, I would just hope that one of those, one of our meetings does have that happen because it is really important for everybody to understand the full system, the accountability system before we move forward.
Good point. I mean, I, I think logically, just because we have to approve the SIPs. And if we want more time, it made sense, but I, I hear what you're saying as well, either, you know, that, yeah, thank you.
So I'm getting the sense that everyone's fine not having a second, oh, haha, second meeting in September. Uh, I don't know, I've lost track of what this would be in terms of number of meetings in September. But um not holding the usual scheduled second meeting in September. Um, and um, and, and advancing the SIPs uh to um, to the October meeting. Um, and then Lonnie, you're gonna perhaps um send out some sort of a poll or doodle poll on different topics that people may wanna select from. Um, yeah.
Yeah, for future, for future, I can throw out some ideas that um we've done in the past as well as some
Okay.
brainstorm and then I could assess that and we can either vote on it or uh in person or doodle poll. And Annie, are those scheduled yet, those two meetings? Or is it me that can't find them or?
Vote on the calendar in January, so it gets developed like in the last week of December usually.
Ah, that makes sense, okay. So we don't yet, okay. That's the idea. Um.
Okay.
That's it. And I think somebody needs to, I can make a
Please do.
motion to extend the meeting that we're close to finishing past eleven o'clock.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the roll or at ten fifty-five. So it's, and we've got two more items uh left on the agenda.
We're actually almost, yeah, okay, okay. I'm not sure we have any items left.
Member Gold?
Uh, no.
Mary Narquitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
No.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
No.
Member Levy?
No.
Member Kaufman?
Yes, but I still think we can do it by eleven.
Uh, Member Goldman?
Yes.
And Member Voss?
Yes.
The vote is six yeses and four noes.
Okay, so the meeting is extended past eleven. Um, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, this is from Member Voss, uh, and this is a um, I'll alter you, Member Voss, and have you explain it.
Sure, so um, I have the email up that I sent the agenda-setting team. I was actually asking for a vote and I would be, and it isn't on there. And if it waits at this point, I guess it's fine. But what my email said is, you may have read that the Worcester School Committee passed this motion. Um, and there is an effort, and this was a few weeks ago, to get as many school committees as possible to pass this motion. So I worded it identically to there, since then I've heard a few other communities have put in slightly different ones. But the reason I worded it the same was just to be simple, if it got to the state level, to be able to say, X number of school committee member, uh, school committees are encouraging this. So the actual wording that they used that I copied was to request. And when we say request, I would ask others to contribute who would, who this would go to. But I think Desi and the governor were two that um a mask representative suggested to me, um, probably others. But to request the state have ongoing, easily accessible, free testing with a quick turnaround in operation across the state before any district brings students back into session. And maybe now that we're three weeks after this was started, it's a different language. But in spending the entire summer thinking about how do we safely get back to school, it's just become very clear to me that at a higher level than a community, this uh state, federal government need to start providing testing. The colleges that are having somewhat of a success coming back are testing students a lot. And it, it just makes sense that if you wanna bring people together sooner, you would figure out a way to test them. So I wanted to put it out there as something for us to um at least know that we could weigh in on if the group wants to.
So do, um, and again, I think this was, um, yeah, I think this was, I think probably just a slight oversight on the agenda cause I know we were, you were wanting the school committee to make this request, to basically make this request. And so I think we just forgot the vote part, but you know, to vote to make this request. So I mean, if you wanted to make a motion tonight, I would entertain it, that they approved this. But if you're worried that the language may have changed over three weeks and you wanna check it out, whatever you, whatever you
No, I, I did actually last week check it out when I saw it was on the agenda. And I think because of all the negotiating, I didn't, I missed that it didn't say vote as well. But I did check it out last Wednesday and I think the language is fine. Uh, I'm just letting you know, I think there's a few other communities with slightly different language. I'm very comfortable with this language. So I, I, I will make a motion, um.
Okay, um, and is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, um, okay, so um, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Member Gold, you had a question?
I guess since we're extending, um, Dr. Provost, can you explain? I thought the whole, what was the rationale be- between not having testing before kids coming into the building? Like, didn't the state say that there's a whole lot of information about how just because you test the kid before they come in? That it doesn't, you know, is there any symptomatic of this and this and that? I mean, the, I, I thought there was a whole science behind why testing for re-entry is not valid for whatever, lack of a better word.
Uh, the, the information that you might be referring to is some, some data that I'd gotten on one of the um conference calls with the commissioner. I would say this is probably about early August or mid-August, where the issue was the um, the lag in, in response. So in order for the information to be usable, it needs to be available in about forty-eight hours. And at, at that time, testing was not available with that type of turnaround. As I understand this motion though, it's not talking about testing with a lag. It's talking about testing that would have an immediate response or a very quick response. Um, I'm not sure that that's available yet, but this, I think that's what this motion is requesting.
All right, thanks. And then, so my only follow-up would be just before, as before my members, uh fellow members vote, like just to consider, does this set a precedent that if we consider, if we vote yes to this, are we setting the table to say, we're not gonna go to hybrid until something like this happens, until there is this rapid testing? I mean, it seems to be suggesting the saying, saying that, so just be, if we vote yes for this, that's potentially setting a precedent. Um, unless I'm misreading it.
Member Busansky.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, I'm concerned, uh, yeah, I'm concerned with the wording of it. And I do wonder what other districts might have voted on, Member Voss, since you said some districts have voted on something a little different. And I guess it's along the same lines of what Member Gold was saying, is it does sound like uh, we'd be saying that we won't bring um students back into session until this is available. And I, I just think there's so much knowledge still being gathered and collected. And what if we get a vaccine before we get rapid testing? And what if we, I mean, it just, I, I agree that, I, I feel like we've had some other motions that I can't pull up on sort of top of head at this moment, but that have been more along the lines of uh one, asking the state or demanding that the state have ongoing, easily accessible, free testing with a quick turnaround time, which is what I really, uh, which is what I would support. Uh, not the part about before any district brings students back into session. So I just worry about kind of getting our hands tied in a way, I.
Okay, Member Voss, how do you?
Yeah, I, I could offer an amendment, the one Lexington put in. I, I have a few here in my email back. Um, we could consider that and I can read it and I will in a moment. But let me just say in response to Member Gold, um, I, I think the real issue is cost. The, the state, I think what this is really saying is you need to think about the, the need to test I think what this is really saying is you need to think about the, the need to test and provide some money for testing. And there's colleges that are testing and people are getting the results back the next day right now. Um, PAC 12 is about to do a rapid test, it sounds like, you know, to, for their athletes. I just read about that today. Um, so it's coming. And right now, last week, Dr. Fauci in grand rounds at Partners Healthcare, which I watched, said, um, 40 to 50% of transmission right now is thought to be by asymptomatic carriers. So if we're looking in September right now to get our schools back running with more people, I think we would be smart to have a broader view of it and realize that testing needs to be part of the conversation. So that's what really motivated this. And let me, um, read to you what I think Lexington passed, which said, request the state have ongoing, routine, easily accessible, free testing for all residents with a quick turnaround in operation across the state as soon as possible to facilitate students and staff returning to school in as safe a manner as possible. So maybe that helps address some of those concerns. Um, from my perspective, this is not, um, a mechanism to say we're not going back at all. I'm not, that's not why I'm proposing it. I think it just is going to make things safer and it needs to be part of the conversation.
Um, um, I, before I recognize member Condon, I, I actually like the Lexington language a little better because it avoids that confusion altogether and just sort of, yeah. So that, that, that would be my word on that. Member Condon.
And as the seconder of the motion, Susan, if that, I'm sorry, member Voss, i- if that is a replacement motion, then I would also second that.
I will replace it and thank you.
Member Condon.
Uh, member Voss, can you, could you read that language one more time, just so I can solidify my question?
Sure. I could, would you like me to share it on a screen, anybody? Would that be helpful?
Yes.
I can, I'm just putting it into a document. Um, let me share. So, no, okay. Am I only sharing that one document?
Yes, I believe so.
Does that, can people see that?
Yep, it looks good.
Thank you.
Uh, I, I, I like that language as written, uh, especially, uh, with going along with what member Gold's concern was. So I would support that.
I'm happy to take it down when people have seen it enough.
Okay. So that is the, um, that's the new language, um, that we would be asking you to approve. And again, this is very much akin to, you know, we've done votes like this on charter school or other things where we want to send a letter to the State House or a resolution or something to the State House to impress upon them, um, the desire of districts around the state. So, um, any other questions about this? Um, okay, so I would ask the clerk, uh, to call the roll.
Mayor Narquitz?
Yes.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
And member Gold?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay.
Can I follow up with a quick question?
Certainly.
I didn't want to take time if it didn't pass, but, um, member Fallon is our legislative liaison. And I would be happy to do what I need to do, but since I brought it, but I'm also happy to turn it over to her to pass this along, whatever she prefers. And I want to just acknowledge, I probably should have reached out to her and I just didn't even think of it because of how busy we've been. And I'm very sorry about that.
No worries. Now that you've taken it on, I'm happy to let you cross the thin line with it.
So you want me to send, send it on?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'll figure out how. I, I might email you about how. Thanks.
Okay, so now we have come to what I believe is the final, uh, vote of the evening, um, other than the one to adjourn, hopefully. Um, so this is, um, C, uh, under new business. Um, and I will ask actually, um, member Kaufman to present this.
Yes, and I mistakenly thought we were done with the new business. So that's why I was so optimistic that we'd be done. This, um, is a motion I, that is written in the agenda, but I feel like I need to give a two-minute, um, explanation. So, um, a couple of weeks ago, the superintendent brought an issue impacting one of our Northampton families to the agenda setting team to discuss and to see what we could and should do to help families in a specific situation. Um, and although, although at that time, we only knew of one family, there certainly might be others. But the situation here is that at least one student we know of was visiting another family member in another state and has not been able to return to Northampton yet due to COVID-19 health and safety reasons. So we'd like, um, the motion more or less supports the idea that we'd like any family in this situation to be permitted to continued enrollment of their child in the Northampton Public Schools on a remote basis, as we believe a child in this situation would certainly greatly benefit from being able to participate in the same remote learning as their peers, and then ultimately be able to seamlessly move right into the classroom curriculum and classroom culture upon their return to our community. So a motion was developed and Dr. Provost, remind me, I think this was reviewed by our attorney?
It was actually developed by the attorney. We had asked Desi for, um, guidance on this. And Desi basically said the committee has the authority to make up its own rule on this. We asked Desi if they could give us a motion. They said they don't do that. So we asked Leila to come up with a motion.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. So a motion was developed. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we pass it. Do you want me to read it?
Second.
Okay, so.
So I need to read it or can I, um?
It's all, it's not super long and I think it would be just helpful to get it on the record. Yeah.
So this is a motion to approve the following that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Five, students who were enrolled in the Northampton Public Schools for the night, for the 2019, 2020 school year would have, or would have met the school district's residency requirements but for the COVID-19 pandemic, whose caregivers certify on or before September 16th, 2020, that the student is temporarily residing in a community other than the city of Northampton due to COVID-19 pandemic and intend to return to their residence in the city of Northampton as soon as the pandemic conditions causing the temporary relocation permit, will continue to be considered as residing in the city of Northampton and permitted to continue enrollment on a remote basis until the close of the COVID-19 pandemic or the close of the 2020, 21 school year, whichever occurs first.
Okay, so that's, that's the motion that was made and seconded. Um, I, I need to recognize her at this point.
Um, I am recusing myself from this vote.
Okay. Okay, so member Seraphy Cox is recusing on this one. Um, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Busansky?
Yes.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox, oh, you're recused, excuse me. Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
And Mayor Narquitz?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Okay, excellent. So, um, future business meeting and meeting dates, Budget and Property, Thursday, uh, seven, September 17th, 4:35 online. Um, and the subcommittee meeting, is that really true? Um?
No. We haven't, we haven't decided to, to cancel it, but there doesn't seem to be as much of a need for it.
Okay, good. And then, and then the aforementioned canceled September 24th School Committee Meeting. So really all we know about is the Budget and Property Committee. Um, and now I would entertain.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Member Fallon?
Yes.
Member Seraphy Cox?
Yes.
Member Condon?
Yes.
Member Levy?
Yes.
Member Kaufman?
Yes.
Member Goldman?
Yes.
Member Voss?
Yes.
Member Gold?
Yes.
Mayor Narquitz?
Okay, yes.
And member Busansky?
Oh, yes.
The vote is unanimous.
Okay, so, um, the vote is unanimous. So this special meeting of the Northampton School Committee, Tuesday, September 15th, 2020, is hereby adjourned. Thank you all.